Call to order, the committee of, City Council Committee of the whole meeting. It's Tuesday, May 29th, about 7:10 PM. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Council members, Emmens.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Hazen. Jacobson.
Oh, here.
Miller. Roberts.
Here.
Wu. Mayor Marlin.
Here.
First, we have approval of the minutes of the previous meeting from the committee of the whole meeting of May 14th. Is there a motion? I'll move that we approve the minutes.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any corrections? If not, all in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed that motion carries? Are there any additions to the agenda? Any changes, Eric?
I just want to note a number of emails that I've had about closing of the Civic Center, and just want to put into the public record that my hope, as I've answered these emails, is that we can, although, that we can facilitate helping people move events that they have been having at Civic Center to other venues. Lincoln Square has been mentioned, and so, anyway, I just wanted to note attentiveness to that concern.
Okay. And there's no action item on that, other than eventual approval of the budget, but we do have a presentation and some discussion coming up during presentations. Dennis?
It's been requested by some individuals that we move number, item number 14, which is a motion for replacement of existing brick sidewalks on Anderson Street to the beginning of, to a higher position on the agenda. So, I make a motion that we place that, well, I guess probably immediately after staff report, or a sanitary sewer map. Yeah, I guess that'd be the, as far as we're forward, as we could put it.
Okay, so that would be to move motion for replacement of the brick sidewalks. That's item 14, up to just after item.
Probably number six.
Six, right before item seven. There are some people to speak about that. There may be some neighbors. I'm not sure if they came or not, but Brad also requested that.
I'll second it.
All in favor of the agenda as amended, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. Next, we have public input. I have a few cards. I have one from Margaret Miller. She's in opposition of changing the brick sidewalks. Says, "Well-laid brick sidewalk is an excellent permeable surface, which provides better drainage, less puddles, and less ice," but she does not want to address the council. We have two that want to address the council. First is Tracy Satterfield. Actually, this is the public input. You can also choose to address the issue when we bring it up, which will be after several other presentations. Do you want to wait for that?
I don't understand the difference in the order.
Yeah, so we did move it up, but there's still going to be like three presentations and a couple of staff reports. So, if you want to wait, we can go through all that, and then you can talk right before we get the present, the brick sidewalk presentation and the vote.
If that's better.
Okay. That's what you actually marked, and I didn't notice that at the time. Now, Scott, you marked the other item. So, I think Scott Dossett wants to speak before the item. Is that right, Scott?
Yeah, that's right. Yeah. Hello, everyone. Thanks for all the work that you do for our city. It's good to see everyone again. I wanted to kind of pull this out of the brick sidewalk thing because, well, for my own reasons, that'll be maybe clear here in a few minutes. I've been on the Historic Preservation Commission in Urbana for two mayors past, Mayor Marlin, and I think as a poetic ending to my service on that committee, I'm not going to take a reappointment, and I apologize for not responding to your mail, Diane, but I've been in Texas taking care of a new grandson. It's interesting that I came into HPC because of brick sidewalks, and I'm going out, as you guys are talking about brick sidewalks at this meeting. And in fact, I got on HPC because I got so mad that they couldn't make a motion about brick sidewalks, the Historic Preservation Commission, that someone challenged me to be on HPC, and I've been on it for, I don't know, 12 years or whatever. It's been a long time now. So, I've been ruminating about that since I had a chance to open my mail. And so, what I want to talk about is this kind of general delusion of history, kind of putting on my historic preservation hat here, a little more than the brick walk hat. You know, the lack of support that's evident, and the constraints on Urbana Public Works just really come back to hit us all the time. On this street that you're talking about right now, we have a young couple that I talked to yesterday. They bought the house at the northeast corner of Anderson and Green, and they've got a dog, and I like dogs, and so we stop and we talk, and we get to know one another. And I asked them if they had an opinion about the brick walk issue that was here. New people in town. Of course, they don't. That history of our neighborhood organization grant where the Historic East Urbana Neighborhood Association actually rebuilt a couple hundred feet over on Maple Street with neighborhood organization grant money that we were, that we competed with, with the city, is lost to them. And so, when asked the question about whether or not the brick walks are important to them in a residential area that comprised, that's comprised of about 50% rentals, you know, somewhere between 25 and 40% of those people that are, you know, present now won't know, won't have any context about that. And so, the young people and the new people just don't know how to value this. In the absence of a robust effort to create a special zoning district for downtown, which is not protected, we could have a repeat of what happened with what, with no defamation intended, I'll call Matt Cho's building. This whole thing with the brick walks makes me just kind of want to end with challenging you to really adequately, and by the way, I'll backtrack on the SIP yard space, to say that it would have been evident to any structural engineer who was evaluating that building up to the point when that facade was lost, that it was going to be. So, that was a ball dropped somewhere. Community development or public works, okay? It's important for you guys to try to prioritize the funding for these efforts. Whether you decide to keep the block on Anderson that you're talking about under the brick tonight or not is really irrelevant to what I'm talking about in a fashion. I'm talking about having a long-term perspective. When we came to the City Council to try to protect brick walks, and through all the discussions that you and I've had over the years, Bill, which I really respect, none of those plans materialized, or few of them did. Hodgepodge efforts. Weed control was made optional to the owner, and so, the idea that these beautiful little brick walks are just like filled with grass, which essentially is tearing them apart biologically, sort of just keeps on getting kicked downstream. So, as you're making this decision, what I'd ask you to think the most about is making the best one in terms of having a walkable community. I think all of us that are of my generation look around and see people that don't take to the streets, neighbors that don't know one another. And so, my bias would be to keep the brick, but what I want you to understand is that in the context of this long-term preservation of your history, you've got to, you've got to make a city that want, people want to be in and to move around in. And so, I hope you, I hope you take that to heart. As a long-term brick advocate, I have to say, I think brick probably does that as well as concrete, but again, it gets back to the constraints on public works and the ability to actually take care of these. So, anyway, that's all I have. Thank you.
And we have Tanya Decker to speak on the speed limit, limitation on Lincoln Avenue.
I read in the paper the other day that they were talking about decreasing the speed limit on Lincoln in front of the sororities from 30 to 25 miles an hour, and it really annoyed me. I've lived here since 1992, and I've systematically seen the choices of the people who live in this town stripped away to accommodate the students. Now, I learned, and I heard, and it's really true, that everything you need to know in life, you find that you learn in kindergarten. Well, I had the distinct impression that none of the students at U of I went to kindergarten because they have no common sense, they can't look up from their phones, and I don't think that we should continue to enable these people who are young adults, the key word being adult, for that, making bad choices. Now, if they step in front of a moving car, that's a bad choice. They should have learned that a long time ago, but if we accommodate and enable them for, to look at their phones instead of making a choice that makes sense, then we just keep stripping away the, you know, my ability to go down the street at 30 miles an hour. Now, do I need to speed down the street? No, but I want to get where I'm going. My daughter went to undergrad here. I know lots of ways to get around campus to avoid the pitfalls, but every time I turn around, they're changing something. Oh, my God, this summer, you need a GPS just to get on and off campus, there are so many roads that are closed. But these students are here to be educated. Why aren't we educating them to make good choices? Instead of spending money to put up flashing lights and electrical things under the sidewalk to tell, and signs to change the speed limit, why don't we have an annual or semi-annual orientation in these sororities or residence halls to teach them how to make good choices? I mean, isn't that a university's responsibility and as, as being Urbana, part of, you know, the university district and contributing to it, since this is a university district Urbana area? Shouldn't we be teaching them to make good choices? Shouldn't we be teaching them to be self-responsible and to make good adult choices instead of burying their noses in their phones and stepping in front of moving cars? I mean, there's many times that when I've driven around campus where I'm the only car, and a student, instead of waiting for me to go on by, steps into the street, so I have to stop. Not only is it selfish and self-serving, but it also increases the pollution. Every time we stop and start up a car, we increase emissions that come from our car. Every time we take away lanes and spend millions of dollars to make Green Street student-friendly, we increase the emissions into the air. And we're not teaching them to be responsible people, we're just enabling them. Why don't we just make it all a small group, and we can be their enablers, so that they don't have to make good decisions? How can you send them out in the world to be responsible adults if you keep making changes so they don't hurt themselves? Heaven forbid, you know? Let them decide that they can learn to step, not step off the curb. Anyway, that's basic, you know, but also, in addition, you know, the more changes that are made to keep town people, or people that live in this area year-round, going onto campus, also impacts the economy, because all of the, all of the businesses in campus town, they already lose business when the students leave, but it goes even further down if we keep making fewer lanes and making it harder and harder for the people that live in town to go to those businesses and to support them. I mean, my gosh, businesses close all the time because in the summer, they get no business because people say, "Well, I never go on campus." You hear that every day. "I never go on campus because, you know, the speed limit's low, and there's no place to park, and all the streets are closed." So, and there was a very timely cartoon in today's paper, and I think maybe spending the money to orient these children and not on the, all the electric flashing lights, it says, and this is Frank and Ernest, it says, "I wonder if there's an app to remind you to look both ways when crossing the street. Perhaps you can use that money to invest in a graduate student to develop this app, and it could be part of the orientation giveaway to the students."
Okay, thank you very much.
I am here to support the staff recommendations for pedestrian safety on Lincoln Avenue, in particular, the quarter mile of Lincoln Avenue, from the stoplight at Cafe Paradiso on Nevada to the stoplight at the Alignai Grove at Pennsylvania Avenue. This section of Lincoln Avenue includes a connection to Urbana's Art District, which includes a museum, numerous entertainment and dining establishments, as well as a gateway to the University of Illinois at Urbana-Champaign. Urbana residents live on both sides of Lincoln Avenue in this densely populated residential area. They live in a variety of housing, from university housing to sororities and fraternities, as well as rental properties and homeowners. This section of Lincoln Avenue also includes the family-friendly Alignai Grove Park. Increasing safety for people on foot and bicycle crossing Lincoln Avenue by lowering the speed limit and adding flashing enhanced pedestrian warning signs at each end of Lincoln Avenue will save lives, decrease motorized vehicle collisions, save wear and tear on the street, save EMT, police, fire, and other city resources associated with motorized vehicular traffic collisions, increase property values, create a safe, safer, less stressful, and more safe crossing of Lincoln Avenue by those walking, biking, and using MTD buses. Thank you for supporting the measure needed to create a safer walking, biking, and transit experience for residents of our city. I'm a resident of Urbana. I'm a year-round bike, pedestrian, and bus commuter to my University of Illinois job. I'm a member of the University of Illinois Transportation Committee, and I'm a member of BPEC, the City of Urbana's Bike, Pedestrian, and Advisory Commission. Thank you.
Thank you. I have some input from Reverend Dr. Evelyn Underwood. Does not wish to speak, but she's continuous, we're continuously concerned about the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer problem. Did you want to speak at the time on item 6, too?
A.
6A, okay. Oh, that, okay, that's about the overhead sewer program. And also, from Eldris Melinda Keir, continued concerns about Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer issues, equity, and historic impact. I neglected to note one other change in the agenda that was requested. That was ISO discussion in the, for the fire department, because there were people here on their shift. I saw the trucks take off, though. Are they gone now? Do you still want to move up? Okay.
Okay, I'd like to start by, first of all, thanking, or thanking Madam Mayor and City Council members, staff, our audience, our firefighters, our officers, and a special thanks to MetCAD, the American, Illinois American Water Association, our firefighters, as I said, and officers, for this public protection class, ISO 1. These are the members, these are the people that were actually rated by the ISO, which is the insurance service offices, and they take a look at what firefighters, what fire departments are doing, and that rating translates into hopefully lower insurance rates. I just want to say that I am, I stand before you very proud to represent a Class 1 Fire Department. On August 1st, this municipality, the City of Urbana, will be registered as a Class 1 ISO-rated Fire Department. They take a look at the Fire Department, which is a 50% part of the rating, the Water Department, which is 40%, and our Communication Center, that is 10%. It takes a look at the fire suppression capabilities. We take a look at the water distribution, emergency communications, and needed flows. ISO evaluates nearly 46,000 communities in the United States. The insurance company rates these insurance, rates the homes and businesses for the entire community. I apologize, I have to catch up with that, that's why we didn't. And then, Urbana's Class 1. Urbana is now one of 305 communities in the United States, out of 46,000. We're one of 305. In Illinois, we're 16. There's only 16 departments in the state of Illinois. Even though if you count these numbers, as you, as you count these numbers up, you'll see that about 1,900, but that takes into some agencies such as Argon National Laboratory, and some factories that have their own fire protection within that, that all gets rated. But we're 16 out of almost 1,200, just a little bit over 1,200, 1,206 departments here in the state of Illinois. I know maybe sometimes the 1% gets a bad rap, but I'll tell you something. This municipality, this Fire Department is in the upper 1% of the country and of the state, and I think that everybody should be very proud of what you've accomplished This is, I'm sorry, this is the, just the ratings, 1 through 10. We actually have a Class 1, 1X, and what they've done here is at one time, it was a Class 1, Class 9. The only difference is there are some areas that are, that are not within 1,000 feet of a fire hydrant, and those areas used to get the Class 9, but it's now 1X. It doesn't reduce our rating here, and it also tells the insurance companies what they have out there to take a look at, and this helps us improve, okay? Our Water Department will strive to make sure that there's adequate water flow for all parts of the City of Urbana. Here's a breakdown of what we've done for the, for Urbana, for the Water Department, for Emergency Communications Center. If you take a look at the numbers, 9.55 out of 10 for Communications, 42.02 out of 50 for the Fire Department, 36.65 out of 40 for the Water Department, and we had 4.22 out of 5.50 for community risk. And you can take a look at some of the areas that, that Urbana has perfect scores in, and then you can see areas that we can improve. We're always striving, striving to try to improve. Moving forward, these are the areas that we can improve upon. We're always looking ways to improve our services to the deserving residents and business owners of Urbana. This exceptional classification shows the Fire Department's commitment to give the best possible service to our community. Our firefighters are well-trained and continue to strive for better education to prepare themselves for those dangerous situations that we encounter on a daily basis. Their emergency medical training is a level that surpasses any of our surrounding communities, further providing our residents with the best possible care in our entire area. The first one that we have up there for moving forward is company personnel. This is an area that we can improve the most upon. The Fire Department would be the area that we can improve the most upon and get our numbers up. If you take a look, if you took a look at the back number, it was 90.92. Class 1s come in at 90.00, so we're above it by .92. That's room for improvement for us. We can move on, we can do better. So, for personnel, we had 96, I'm sorry, 9.61 out of 15. What that indicates is that those firefighters and officers are in areas on apparatus that ISO makes a recommendation for a department, for a department that we're at, their numbers with five pieces of apparatus, four engines in a truck, they're wanting 30 people to respond. Okay, our numbers are not there, and not few people will get to those numbers, not few departments will get to those numbers. But we're striving. Right now, our numbers, and I'm throwing a lot of numbers out to you, but the 15.21 gives us that room to bump it up a little bit. We are also reevaluating these numbers, right? I have, or we have the ability to go back and take a look at these numbers and talk to ISO and see exactly, they didn't sound exactly where they wanted to be, but even if we bumped this up a couple points, we'll be a little bit more solid in that, in that number one. Training continually evolves. Budgets constraints is a common cause for the training to decline. We're at 7.35 out of 9. We have the Illinois Fire Service Institute in our backyard, however, we still have costs for these classes, programs, and practical resources. So, every time we go to the IFSI, they're charging us to do that. So, we're looking for that. We're looking for other ways that we can use our personnel over there at those facilities at lower cost. For a training budget that we have, we need to take a look at some efficiencies, and that's what we're doing right now. The next one was reserve ladder. We do have the possibility, including that, that's a half a point, but every half a point counts. So, it's a possibility that we can take a look at. We're purchasing a new ladder truck, ladder tower, and then that one would be available for that purpose if we need to do this. I know you're aware of some of the situations we have right now. We take a look at reserve apparatus, and we think, is it worth it? Is it worth keeping this? If you were here today, this morning, in the fire station, you'd know, we're right now running on three reserve pieces of apparatus. Three engines are in reserve status because we have some mechanical problems, physical, mechanical, on the apparatus that has to be worked out, but it's taking us a long period of time. Today, we had to reach even further and go into our final last reserve to bring it back up because of some mechanical problems that Fleet was able to help us out with. So, when we talk about reserve apparatus, for months, for years, we might go and say, it's not worth it, it might not be worth it. Why are we maintaining a 1990 piece of equipment? And then, all of a sudden, this happens. So, it's something to keep in mind when we're, when we're moving forward with our apparatus. The next is deployment. Analysis looks at the number of capable, number and capability of existing engine ladder companies covering all the areas that are built upon. They're not looking to areas that are not built upon, so when we distribute stations, that's what they're looking for. Something to keep in the back of our mind when we're moving forward. Emergency reporting is looking at the provisions of the Communication Center, including enhanced 911 service, wireless phases, voice-over-internet protocols, the CAD system, which computer aided dispatch, GIS, and AVL. That's vehicle, automatic vehicle locating. I say that because we do not have that at the current time, that's why our score was knocked down a little bit. All it does is it provides dispatch communications, knowing where all our vehicles are at any given moment, and in any instance, they would be, they would have the capabilities if we go in that direction to be able to have the closest to respond to any emergency. So, in other words, if an engine was passing another station, or another department, or whatever, and it was closest, that could be sent immediately instead of waiting for the other responses. Something to think about again. Water supply looks at the locations and determines water flow for any, for any structure business that's out there. We talk about fire hydrants. We have a total of 4,624 hydrants, which 4,506 are actually on six-inch mains or larger. The other 118 are less than six-inch, which obviously says that we have less of a water flow if it's a smaller hydrant, or smaller line. As water mains are replaced, they're replaced with larger lines, and our, we will be able to improve our points there. Inspections and flow, testing, look at the frequency and the adequacy of all the fire hydrants. The inspections allow for improvements because they are based on annual inspections, and if they exceed annual, it just comes down a little bit low. So, if we can bring it back up to an annual, we'll have a perfect score there. Community risk reduction. ISO wants us to have the most current fire codes up to date. Currently, we are at a 2009 fire code. We're looking at new codes for the city. They'd like to bring us up currently to 2015. New codes will be coming out again here in 2018, but we always, we're one. New codes will be coming out again here in 2018, but we always, we're one step behind to make sure that the codes that are in place for 2018 are working. Additionally, fire prevention programs are also reviewed for relevance, relevance and effectiveness. Fire prevention education programs and investigation programs are reviewed, and we got a 4.22 out of 5.50, so that's a total of 90.92 out of 105.5. Again, I'm throwing a lot of numbers at you, I know that you had some of this, and most of this, but as a public, I'm sorry, as a public protection Class 1, everyone in our community, our firefighters, our officers, our telecommunicators, our water department, our city council members, and the members and our residents should be very proud of this accomplishment. The rating reflects highly of the city of Urbana. And beginning August 1st, I encourage all residents and business owners to contact their property liability agents, advise them that we are a public protection Class 1 now from the I S O, and they should be able to look to make sure that they get the best possible insurance ratings for their properties. I'll put it here, if there's any questions, I'm here for you, and if not, I want to thank you very much for the opportunity to present that to you. Again, I can't tell you how much I am proud to represent the firefighters and the officers that worked to make this happen. There's a lot of office, there's a lot of paperwork involved, but they're the ones, the firefighters, the ones that do the training, do the responses, do everything else out there. So you have a great, great group of people here, and I'm very proud to represent them. Any questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And that was interim fire chief James Egert, who has replaced chief, gosh, I forgot his name, Brian Nightlinger. So soon we forget. Okay, so next is a budget review. This one is going to be on pension funding and updates to the financial policies. Elizabeth Hannan.
So I'm just going to take a minute here to introduce Todd Schroeder, who is the actuary who performs studies on our police and fire pension funds. He's more qualified than, than I to discuss this subject, so I'm going to let him do that. And I'm not going to review the background information that I already provided my memo because I assume you've all had a chance to take a look at that already. So I'll leave it to Todd.
All right. Thank you, Elizabeth. What I'd like to do, I'm not going to take up too much of your time tonight, but what I'd like to do is give you a brief overview of the process we went through with respect to the pension funding policy statements for the police and fire pension funds, show you a couple, couple of results, and then certainly answer any questions you have regarding the results or the process that was in place. Just on a high level, in the actuarial process, we're either estimating future benefits that are going to be paid, or we're talking about funding policy, which is step two of our process. And that's really what we're talking about here tonight is funding policy. And there's, there's two issues we've seen with funding policy that have crept up over the last few years. One issue is there's these state statutory minimum contributions that have been going into the pension funds. Those statutory minimum contributions are, are based on the parameters that have been in state statute since 2011. Ultimately, those parameters are satisfy state minimum requirements, but aren't necessarily good long-term funding policy. The state does issue a report based on those parameters, and they issue a three-page memo regarding that report, and they say the same thing in that report, essentially that the policy in the long term is not intended to pay full benefits, and you should consider putting in more if you want to pay full benefits. So step one is, we don't necessarily have a good long-term funding policy if we look at this just from a statutory minimum perspective. Issue two, kind of the balancing issue that we were trying to work through, is that a more sound, long-term recommended funding policy was creating contributions between the two pension funds that are nearly double what the statutory minimum is. So certainly a significant increase over the contributions that have been going into the pension fund. So what we were trying to do is, and we looked through a lot of different scenarios, is look for a compromised position to get ourselves on a better long-term funding path without necessarily having to take that leap in one year to double our contributions in a one-year period. So if you look at the slide that's up there right now, and we've got the individual pension funds in here as well, I'll go through the slides, it just, the two slides that have the aggregate information, combining the two pension funds. What we have charted out here is a projection of contributions into the pension funds. That bottom line, that purple line, that is your statutory minimum contribution requirement, so it is the lowest contribution requirement between the two pension funds. Combined, it's about roughly $2.2 million, and then will be steadily increasing over time. That top line, or that orange line, is our current recommendation that sits in the pension reports, combined again between the two pension funds. It's north of $4 million combined, as I mentioned, almost twice what the statutory minimum is. And again, has a fairly stable, with some increase towards the tail end there, future pattern over time. What we've come up with, and what we looked at, again, a lot of different scenarios, is that green line in the middle. And what we tried to do was balance out getting ourselves on a good term, a good long-term funding path, but in the same time, provide some, some mechanism to get there that doesn't necessarily take just one year to do it. So we put in what we call a five-year transition plan, and what that green line is saying is we try to ramp ourselves up at least towards that orange line over, over the period of the next five years, at a more, at an aggressive pace, and then kind of stabilize our contributions at that point, at a level that increases a little more moderately in the long term. That policy comes with 100% funding target in the future, and it's a 20-year, 20-year model to pay off that funding, that funding, as opposed to the state that has the 90% funding target over the next 23 years. So the green is intended to provide some sort of, at least a path or a model that moves you towards a good long-term funding policy without having to take that step so quickly. And one other chart that'll illustrate what we're looking at, if you look at the orange line on this chart, the orange line is, and these three lines are basically graphing out your unfunded liability as it's projected going forward. Right now, it sits right around 30 million between the two pension funds. If you look at the orange line, that's our unfunded liability path, assuming we continue to contribute the statutory minimum on a year-by-year basis. So five years down the road, we might be looking at another, you know, having this discussion with another $10 million of unfunded liability. 10 years down the road, it could be up to $50 million of unfunded liability between the two pension funds that we're talking about, which is why we're trying to address this in the, certainly in the near term here. The current recommendation before this proposed policy, again, that requires doubling of the contribution immediately, is that purple line. So that is the best path, or most aggressive path, in terms of paying down the unfunded liability over time. But again, it does come with a pretty significant jump in contributions in the near term. If you look at the green line in the middle, that's our, that's our, our middle of the road, or our compromise path here. You can see you have a small increase in the unfunded liability in those first several years as you go through that transition period, but you've mitigated that as compared to putting in the statutory minimum contribution over time. And then eventually, we do start to chip away and pay down that unfunded liability, again, with a goal of paying off that unfunded liability over the next 20 years as part of this process. So that's, that's what I had for you tonight. Were there any questions about the pension reports in general, the funding, funding policies, anything like that?
Dennis?
So the, the option that you're suggesting is kind of an aggressive five-year increment in the funding policy, and I understand that you're trying to mitigate the rise of the unfunded part. But would it be more gentle and perhaps more prudent for the city to take a slightly slower slope to reach that goal and push it back maybe three years more, or two years more?
Generally, with funding policy, we try with these transition plans not to go beyond a five-year period with the transition. The reason for that is if, if we do that, you start to see too much increase in that unfunded liability on this, on this second chart over time because we're continuing to push contributions back. So we generally recommend between three and five years of transition, and we went with five years, certainly in this model. So it's not something that's out of the question, but not necessarily prudent for long-term funding, just because of the, the length of time it's pushing it back.
So this is like a best-case scenario recommendation for, you're offering to us?
I want to say, I believe it is, this, this recommendation is as far as, as far as basically, we can push it, but stay within the parameters of what the Government Finance Officers Association considers a reasonable funding policy for pensions. And, and even with this, we're going to see some modest increase in the unfunded liability before we start to pay it down, so.
And that's partly because costs keep going up for the pension?
Sure, I mean, it's complicated, there's a whole lot of things that go, that go into the actuarial figures, but the longer we take to pay it down, the, the more the unfunded liability is going to build.
And, and just for, I guess, knowledge and comparison, does Urbana stand in a fairly good position as far as its pension funding compared to many other cities across Illinois?
Yeah, generally speaking, right now, your, your funded percentages, I believe, are sitting in the 60 to 80% between the two funds. I can pull, I've got the exact numbers here if you want me to pull them out.
You don't have to be exact.
But we're, right now, across the state, I mean, we're generally seeing across our clients, I'm sitting in that 55 to 58% funded. So you've got one fund that's close to that level, above that, but close to that level in terms of the average pension fund, and one that's certainly further ahead of that as well.
What, what communities are, are doing very good in maintaining their funding at, you know, like 90% currently?
Generally, if we're looking at 90% and north, we're seeing that, don't see that a lot, certainly with Illinois communities. Most commonly, if I do see that, it's typically a fire protection districts, and a lot of them are fairly new, so they haven't gone down a long road of, you know, they're, they're early in their pension life, they've got all active members, they're just growing the funds. Maybe did some pre-funding so they could take advantage of some investment rules and things like that. So when you're looking at 90% and above, a lot of it is our fire district clients.
Okay.
I just wanted to mention, since, since we've been talking about unfunded liability, this is in the report, but just since 2014, since when we started to decrease our funding level, our unfunded liability has increased from 15.4 million to 19.1 million. So, I mean, obviously, it's not just one thing that affects that, but part of what's affecting that is the level of funding that we're putting into the fund currently.
Eric? So I, clearly, we have an ethical obligation to pay the pensions when people retire. But this is, I guess, as a context, I'd like to ask, maybe this is a legal question for Jim. Jim, is the legal status of that obligation constitutional, statutory, or contractual?
Contractual and statutory.
Contractual?
Because you have a state-required minimum, which here is indicated at 90%.
Okay, but it's not, it doesn't rise to the level of constitutional as state pensions are?
No. However, if you were to try to deprive somebody of their pension, now you get into constitutional issues because deprivation of property without due process.
So, and, and I'm not raising that issue at all to say that this is a direction we should even consider going. What I am raising, the reason I'm raising it, is that I think it's very important that our firefighters and our police officers, that everybody who's covered by this, believe that we are acting in good faith. And so I, I definitely support a path that is as aggressive as the one that you've outlined, in spite of the fact that we're going to have to squeeze elsewhere in our budget.
Any other questions? Aaron?
Yeah, so some of the terminology, unfunded liabilities and things like that, I'm a bit familiar with because I'm a trustee for the State University Retirement System. But it takes time to understand all that. So when you say unfunded liability, in the clearest terms possible, what does that mean to people who are listening and watching?
So the, the liability, ultimately, in the pension fund falls with two groups. One is the inactive members, and basically what, what we're, what we're saying we want to have in the pension fund for inactive members is all their future benefits. We want to be done funding for them. So piece A of the liability is the value of all future benefits for anyone who's retired, disabled, anyone else who's receiving payments or entitled to future payments, but is not an active member in the pension fund. So if the fund had just inactive members and was 100% funded, there'd be zero funding going forward, and all the money would be there to pay their pensions. On the active member side, being 100% funded, depends on where the active members at in their working career. Effectively, active members, somebody hired today would come in with zero liability, and then when they hit retirement, they would have that, we'd want to have, we would want to have all the money in the pension fund for them at the point they hit retirement, and it just grows throughout their working career. So somebody halfway through their working career, maybe it represents half of their future benefits that we expect them to get. So, so ultimately, it's, ultimately, what we're saying, when you're 60 to 80, or 65 to 85% funded, is we have 65 to 85% of those dollars in there. The dollars that we need to pay all the retirees and disabled members, and the dollars that we'll need at some point in the future to pay the active members, depending on where they're at in their working career.
So right now, the city of Urbana has the ability to pay all of our retired police officers and firefighters?
I can look at the breakdown here.
What I'm ultimately trying to make sure that it is clearly understood, is that we, when we say unfunded liability or 60% funded, does that mean to the person listening, or to the firefighters and police officers who are looking forward to retirement, what does that mean to them as far as, will there be, will their pensions be funded? Will they get a check every month currently? So are all of our current members of ex-firefighters and police officers in the city of Urbana, are they receiving their full pensions?
Yeah, to my knowledge, I've not heard that somebody has not received a pension check. Ultimately, this funding policy isn't, we're not, we're going through this process, we weren't too concerned with the folks next year, the year after, getting their pension checks, because certainly there's dollars sitting there in the pension funds to, to pay those benefits. This is really about making sure the dollars are there in the long term, and giving the city an efficient way to get there.
Right. And so what I'm trying to make sure that I'm clear about, and I think it helps other people to understand this as well. So when you're talking about in the future, are we talking five years, 10 years, 15 years? What are we looking at, like, currently, at 60% funded? Are you saying in 20 years, there are going to be retired firefighters or retired police officers who will not be able to get their pension checks, right? I mean, just, it's plain like that is possible for people to understand.
I think there's a lot of factors that go into that. Certainly, the dollars, if you look at it from a dollars today standpoint, and not putting any money in going forward, you know, it would be probably a real high-level estimate, because I haven't run this specifically. You know, the money might last 20, 20 years or so, and then the folks who are coming up behind wouldn't have any dollars there in the pension fund. So what we're trying to do is build that, kind of bridge that gap for the folks who are going to be getting paid beyond that point in time, which is some of your retirees and, and most of your active workforce as well with this policy.
And so for us, I know that there's, you have to invest the money for it to grow, right? That's one way, and of course, you're not going to make up the difference, you're not going to get to 100% or even 90% funded just from investments. That's not enough. You have to have these other contributions, from the annuitants, from the active members, as well as from the contributions that come from the state, right?
From the city.
From the city. For us, it would be the city, I'm thinking about serves, right? So I understand that we have to continue to make that grow, and I think we're looking at a 30-year sort of, on average, we're looking at 30-year retirement, right? People work for 30 years, they retire, and then get their, their pension, and maybe a little bit shorter, or?
Yeah, and, and I mean, in these pension funds, I believe most police officers and firefighters can retire after 20 years. And I M R F 30 would be more typical.
Right, thank you. So I'm just trying to make it as plain for, for folks as possible, because we're dealing with a tremendous crisis, the mayor's talked about, 2.5 million over the five years trying to cut out of the budget. So everyone is looking to see where budget cuts are taking place, and the ability to pay for pensions, I think, is critical. I, I'm not at all saying that we shouldn't fund- I think it's a lot of balancing that we have to do going forward in dealing with whether it's pensions, or whether it's Afsmi, or whoever, the other union groups as well, that we have to deal with all the employees here. So I just wanted to try to make sure I had an understanding, but I think some people who stopped me in the store, or who called me and said, hey, could you ask some questions? And these types of questions are important to the people who don't do this every day, to try to make it as plain as possible. So I appreciate just a little bit of you taking your time to indulge me.
Sure.
Yeah, Elizabeth?
I know that we've talked about this before, I mean, everybody's going to get their checks in the near term. The issue more for the city is that the longer we take to pay, the more we owe, so that unfunded liability grows and grows and grows, and so if we don't make the decision to address it now, at some point in the future, some other city council and some other finance director are going to be sitting here trying to figure out how to dig out of a much bigger hole than what we're facing now, which is pretty big in my opinion already.
So the whole kick the can down the road is going to bite us later on. We've got public, we've got facilities issues, people are going to be upset about the civic center, because we're not able to take care of certain things, or the roads, or whatever. So we're all trying to find funds to take care of the essential services and other things that we need in the community. But we're all being asked to be lean as possible. So I think Dennis's questions are relevant questions about what is the average across the country, I mean, across the state, where are we at in relationship to that? But I don't want to see it go down. I'm not advocating for anything like that, I'm just trying to see the big picture, right, of what we're dealing with. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions on pensions? Nope. If not, then we also have financial policies.
Yes, and if you don't have any other questions on pensions, I will let Todd take his leave, since he has to travel tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, I don't have any pretty slides for this one, so, basically, there are two recommended changes in the financial policies that we would like to ask you to approve at the time that you adopt the budget. The first one of that, the first one of those is a pension funding policy, as we've discussed here. The second is just changing in the policies our definition of a balanced budget. So currently, we define a balanced budget as our level of recurring expense does not exceed our level of recurring revenue. And the fact is, that doesn't leave us much breathing room when our revenues don't meet expectation, or something unforeseen happens. So, for example, if our sales tax revenues don't meet expectations, then we're immediately in a situation where our level of recurring expense exceeds our level of recurring revenue. So what we would like to propose on that is that we set a target of recurring expenditures not exceeding 98.5% of recurring revenues in the general fund. And if you approve that, then as we go into the next budget cycle, we would use that and our other financial policies that have been approved by council as our guideline that we use in developing the annual budget. That's it.
Any questions for Elizabeth? Eric?
So, if I understand it rightly, this moves us in the direction of being a bit more conservative in what we call a balanced budget.
Yes, a bit more conservative. It puts us in a better position to withstand the fluctuations that, you know, are prone to happen. I can't, as try as I might, I can't always estimate revenues accurately. I certainly can't predict what's going to happen at the state level that's going to affect our budget.
Mayor Myron?
I would say it also makes us a little more resilient. It's another way to look at it.
I like that word.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Next is Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee Annual Report, and I'm going to do that one, so I'd ask Dennis to take the chair, and Craig, if Craig could join me too.
Craig Schonka-Waller and Bill Brown, prepare your presentation, and we'll have questions and comments.
I'm providing the annual report for the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Commission. This is for the year 2017, so January through December calendar year. Currently consists of 11 members. I was, I've been chair since July of last year, that's an appointed chair. Cynthia Hoyos, vice chair. We have Annie Adams, who's here. Leo Kovis is representing Champaign County Bikes, he was appointed for himself in his own knowledge. He also happens to be president of Champaign County Bikes. Cara Doudak represents the Urbana Park District. Nancy Westcott. Susan Jones. Jeff Marino. Lily Wilcock represents the University of Illinois. Audrey Ishy represents the Urbana School District, and Craig represents our staff So just a brief background, in case, well, I guess, our new members aren't here, so you guys are all familiar, but BPAC was established in 2006, relatively new commission for the purpose of analyzing proposed bicycle routing, operation safety of bicycles, to make recommendations to city council on biking and walking facilities, capital improvement plan, and bicycle master plan. They also try to do education and public outreach on bicycle pedestrian issues. Our first bicycle master plan was adopted in 2008. Urbana received the bronze level bicycle-friendly community status in 2010, and in 2014, we were the first community in Illinois to receive the gold level bicycle-friendly community status. And that is good through this year, so we will be trying to renew that or potentially going up to the next level. The bicycle-friendly community is evaluated on what they call the five Es, which is now six Es, engineering, education, encouragement, enforcement, evaluation, and equity. And I highlighted the ones that we have the most input on. I mean, we have input on all those, but we also have some very good community partners that tend to do a lot of the education and encouragement that really has helped us obtain that bicycle gold level. So last year, we had a few activities, conducted a survey of residents on biking and walking activities, priorities, and knowledge of the work of BPAC, and we got more than 300 responses. I'll show just a few slides from that. We directed development of the, started directing the development pedestrian master plan. They got through their community input stage, and we began the kind of pillars and goals and objectives phase at the end of last year, and that's, we're currently continuing that. That'll be our first, yeah, first pedestrian master plan for the City of Urbana. We also discussed implementation of Urbana's Vision Zero goal, that was the council goal last year, and I'll talk a little bit more about that. It's basically trying to reduce fatal and, all accidents, fatal and injuries, in all modes of transportation, vehicles, walking, pedestrians, bicycles. We also celebrated the August 25 opening of Kekapu Rail Trail. I think several of you were here, were there, and I know Aaron rode my bike back and kept it in good shape. We provided input on several capital improvement projects, road projects, University Avenue bike and pedestrian improvements, dockless bike sharing, Bradley Avenue bike lanes, replacement signage for the restricted biking on certain sidewalks, like downtown Urbana, downtown bicycle parking, and Cunningham Avenue multi-use path under the interstate. I don't think I had extra slides on that number four, so I'll just mention that the signage that we're talking about currently, and for downtown, says no bikes allowed, or something like that, and it's kind of up high on a post, and cyclists don't tend to look high on posts, they're mostly looking at the road that they're on, so if they're riding on the sidewalk, they're probably looking at the sidewalk. So our recommendation there was to have something painted on the sidewalk, and something a little bit more friendly, like dismount zone, or, I think that's what we decided on, was dismount zone, and there's some graphics that Craig has found, and they're going to experiment with. So these are some questions from the survey that BPAC came up with. Just an example, how have biking conditions changed in Urbana the past several years? For biking, over, at least half or close to half think that conditions have improved, and maybe 10% thought they'd worsened. And what do you like about biking? Well-designed bike lanes, plenty of bike parking, those are things that people like to see, bike racks and MTD buses. How have walking conditions changed in Urbana the past several years? Not as many said they've improved, maybe 10% to 15% said that walking conditions have improved. Most of them said they've remained the same. Again, about 10% said they've worsened. What discourages you from walking more frequently in Urbana? Narrow or poorly maintained sidewalks was the highest one. Poorly lit streets was the second highest. Speeding cars is third. So in the pedestrian master plan, it's under development with Champaign County Regional Plan Commission, and that's been funded through last year's budget, or current year's budget. So in 2017, nine neighborhood workshops were held in April and May, resulting in 114 survey responses and maps showing trip activity in areas of concern. So this was more of a hands-on workshop where people could mark routes they took on the maps. And the other one, the previous one was Survey Monkey Survey, and that was conducted by BPAC and Kevin Garcia, Community Development here. And that was, so that was mostly an online survey. This one could be online, or it could be at the workshops, I think, or were they all workshops? I think all these were probably done at the workshops. But the pedestrian master plan should be done later this year. Just a little bit about Vision Zero, the philosophy, it's a philosophy a lot of cities and some states are starting to adopt, where it shifts away from the idea of acceptable levels of risk, and works under the belief that traffic deaths and serious injuries are preventable through road design, enforcement, and culture. I think both, all those things were mentioned by the public input we had earlier. The first woman talked a lot about culture, about how people need to be more aware of their surroundings, and that's definitely a big part of it. And the graphic shows national statistics on what happens to pedestrians when they're hit by cars at different speeds. At 20 miles per hour, you have a 9 in 10 chance of surviving. At 30 miles per hour, you have about a 50/50 chance of surviving. And at 40 miles per hour, you have about 10% chance of surviving. The Kekapu Rail Trail got off to a good start, seen a lot of usage. The ribbon cutting was in St. Joe on August 25th. The Forest Preserve District is currently working on the next phase to the county line, and they also received a grant for trail enhancements. I'm not sure what that's going to be used for yet, but that should be interesting. Amenities enhancements. We're also working with the Urbana Park District and Regional Plan Commission on the Weaver Park connectivity options, and they just presented their first options last week. There were nine alternatives presented, and you could go and comment on the various alternatives and pick your favorite one. And I think they're still taking online input on that for the rest of the week, so you might go to the RPC site or Google Weaver Park connectivity options, and should be able to find it. This was another statistical study, or statistical, I don't know what you call it, I guess, just analysis of surveys that were received during Bike to Work Day last year, done by Leo Kovis, Champaign County Bikes. So you just put together results from the people that signed up to stop at the stations on Bike to Work Day. So this one is one-way miles traveled in their commute. The people that stopped at Champaign Public Works had the longest commute, but this is average, so if there were only 15 people that stopped at that station, and one of them came from Mohammed, that might be driving up damage a little, average a little bit, but it kind of gives you an idea of whether people are coming short distances or far distances. Tended, on campus, the distances seem to be shorter in general. That was, oh yeah, so that shows the total at each station. Another question was, how often do you bike to work? And 7% of the people who showed up at these stations said this was the first time they ever biked to work, so it was a good, it was a pretty good, pretty good encouragement mechanism to get people to try it. And that varied a lot depending on the stations that they stopped at. Brooklyn Center had over half the people whose first, who, yeah, whose first, whose first time, no, over half the people drove, that's what it was. So half the people drive to work normally. These are of the ones that biked that day. For most of the rest of them, more than half the people biked, but it varied a little bit by stop. We also looked at some census statistics on bike and walking shares. That's how it's changed a little bit over the years. This is from the five-year American Community Survey Statistics. Red lines are Urbana, the solid lines are pedestrians, and the dotted lines are cyclists. And this is only counting people who bike or walk to work, not counting students. And it's only, and it's spread out throughout the whole year, so in summertime, it would be higher than that, and wintertime, it'd be lower, but the way they do the survey is they take a regular amount every two weeks, so it's, so they'll be surveying people in December, January, when hardly anybody's biking, maybe a few people walking still. So it gets averaged out, but one way, one reason we look at this is because it's consistent and it's reported every year, so over time, you should be able to see some trends. We have seen a little bit of upward trend in cycling in Urbana, it looks like, and slight downward trend in walking, and we aren't sure if that's people shifting to cycling, or people using the bus more. But that was, it's pretty slight, just a couple percentage. A few things we're going to be working on this year. We want to provide education on the two-stage left turn and dockless bike share. The graphic at the bottom shows a two-stage left turn that will be implemented in the EMCOR project. This graphic has more lanes than EMCOR will there, but the idea is, the one on the left is typically the way a more seasoned bicyclist might do it, is signal and move over through the lanes and get into the left turn lane and act like a car, take a vehicle turn, and then go into the bike lane. The second way is perhaps a way someone would do it who's not as confident or as aggressive, and that would be more like a pedestrian, where you go over and you can use the sidewalk, go up on the curb and then use, or the crosswalk, go up on the curb, and use the other crosswalk, you'd have to wait for the light, so you have to wait for a light change for that. This two-stage left turn would be, you use the green-marked bike boxes, and then you get out in front of the vehicle traffic, you still wait for the light, but it's a little bit shorter path, and it's a little less, less likely to cause interactions with pedestrians and cars. So we have to do some education on that. There are some videos and other material that we're working on producing. Just wanted to show a few, I have two slides of this, because they all wouldn't fit on one slide. A lot of the other organizations that we work with have supported bicycling and pedestrian infrastructure, education, encouragement, and equity through, through the various activities. I do CUS Safe Rides to school, does, helps with a lot of bicycle rodeos. Also worked with Don Moyers Boys Club last year to do an earn a bike project. Healthy Champaign County, Urbana Park District, the bike project here in downtown Urbana, and also on campus, help provide low-cost bikes for people. Neutral Cycle has been real good about coming to the farmer's market and doing bike clinics to do like adjustments on brakes and things like that. All of the local bike shops have been real supportive of our ride sponsorships. Champagne Cycle has also done some clinics, and they have a real good communication, another email list with communication about all kinds of bike rides and bicycle activities. Urbana Police Department does a bicycle giveaway, and also is important in our enforcement effort, which is part of the, part of the ratings to get, to keep your gold rating. We also have Champaign County Bikes, a major advocacy organization. Line I-4000 is a bicycling group that will be... Linei four thousand is a bicycling group that will be, that has left New York City about ten days ago on their way across, uh, across the country to, uh, San Francisco raising money for, uh, to fight cancer. They'll be in town next week, uh, Tuesday night, Wednesday, all day Wednesday and leaving Thursday. So if you wanna ride, ride with them Thursday morning up to Ran Toole, they'll let you do that. You might wanna give them a check and say thanks. Um, but there is gonna be a, um, a reception for them, uh, with the chancellor Tuesday night, I think at Beckman. Here, uh, I, I don't remember. So, uh, we wanna talk to the mayor about maybe doing a resolution or something there, or a, yeah, proclamation. Bike, BikeSafetyQuiz.com is the, uh, the way that if you get a bicycling, uh, traffic ticket, the first time you can take, uh, the Bike Safety Quiz and not have to pay the fine. And it's a, it's a good quiz for anybody to take, motorist and cyclist, there's different versions for different people. So if you go to BikeSafetyQuiz.com, you can take that. That's produced by Ride Illinois, which is a state organization. We also have, uh, several bicycle clubs. Prairie Cycle Club offers more than twelve rides, uh, twelve weekly rides, various, uh, abilities. Biocard Cycling, Midwest Cycle Club, they're more, uh, racing oriented, Midwest Cycle Club is kind of in between. There's also the Linei Cycling Club, which is, uh, just another riding group. And then there's just some, uh, kind of offshoots of Prairie Cycle Club. You get recumbent rides and, uh, foodie rides and all sorts of fun, fun rides to bring out different riders of different abilities. Cynthia Hoyle's been, uh, real good about, um, including, helping the B-PAC stay informed of all the different things that, uh, C U Safe Routes to School does. They really do a lot with rodeos and Prairie Cycle, and Champagne County Bikes does a lot with that too. That's, uh, I think that's at Don Moyers Boys Club that, or with that group. I think that's at Douglas Park there. I had to put in a plug for the first, uh, for the annual Ride Foray, it's coming up in, uh, a week and a half. For the second Annual Ride Foray, the first Annual, Annual Ride Foray was last summer and raised twenty-four thousand dollars for ALS research and support. And the Bike Project, just some other pictures of Bike Projects. Group Ride, it's at a common ground there and a race in Urbana Coastal Lake Park. And that's all I have. Are there any questions?
Were there questions for, um, the presenters?
Aaron Adams.
So thanks, Bill. I appreciate the presentation. Craig, good to see you at the movies. The tickets for bicyclists, are they the same as for vehicles?
I think they're a hundred dollars. I think they're always a hundred dollars. They're less than vehicles, but the, the laws are the same. They're all moving violations. They, I don't think they go on your, I don't know. Do they go on your driver's license record?
I'm not sure.
Not sure. Nope. They don't go on your driver's license record. But they, uh, you, you can get them for all the same violations as you can in the car.
So a general question for folks who drive all the time that I hear is like, uh, but you have to respect a, a bicyclist as if they are a motor vehicle, you, right? So if they're in the street, if they're making a left turn, like, just like what you show with the more aggressive riders will do. I can't say I'm advocating that bicyclists get tickets at that rate or, or any of those types of things, or if it should go on your driving record. But I just thought it was interesting, the idea of being able to go to the website and do the coursework and have your ticket relieved. I mean, that's, I mean, it's a hundred bucks. For the first offense, you save a hundred dollars. I just thought it might be an idea, we could do something similar for vehicles, right? Why not, right? So I just thought that was interesting and I appreciate the education around biking, um, just in general. Uh, I have bikes at home that are really need a repair, but if you don't know how to repair them, do the folks at the Bike Project and those other places, do they help you? They just provide the space for you and say you go figure it out?
I've gone a few times and, and I've had help. Um, yeah, I think there's usually somebody there that'll help you. For, as long as it doesn't get too complicated, um, I think they'll help you and, uh, you can leave your parts there and, and mark them and everything, so. It may take you two or three days to fix it, um, where it might take somebody else an hour or something, but eventually you get it.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Other questions for, um, the bike presentation at this time?
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Craig, did you want to add anything?
No, good job.
You had a very easy position here, Craig.
That's right.
You just nodded yes. That was cool. Alright, thanks very much then. And I surrender the, the meeting back to the original chair.
Okay, next, next we have a presentation on, uh, potential closure of Urbana Civic Center by Public Works.
Good evening. Um, just as a matter of introduction, of course, I'm Bill Gray, Public Works Director. And one of the, uh, items in the budget for consideration is for cost savings measures is potential closure of the Urbana Civic Center. And I want to introduce and he'll present tonight an overview of this, um, action is Vince Gustafson, who's our facilities manager.
And, and I should say that, that many of the council members actually did a walkthrough with Vince and have been briefed about the issues. But this public has not, so it'll be interesting to hear.
Right, and I appreciate your time to come through and walk through because a slide doesn't necessarily represent what you can see with, when your eyes are right there looking at it. Um, I'd like to start, um, this evening with just a general background. Um, the Civic Center was constructed, um, in the late nineteen sixties. Um, and since then, we've operated with a mission of providing a low-cost option, um, for events and meeting space in the community. The types of public events that we typically host include, um, weddings and family gatherings such as bridal showers and retirement parties. We host several small clubs, um, locally and civic groups. Um, we host several religious organizations, um, small, small local churches, large local churches, as well as cultural organizations. We also host several large weekend events, um, where we have craft fairs and other hobby type events, a very large, um, stamp, um, stamp club exhibit. The Civic Center also serves as a venue for city-sponsored functions. Our open houses for engineering projects and community development projects, um, as well as, um, public forums. We serve as a venue for, um, public arts display. We host our, um, monthly food truck rallies. And we also, um, serve for additional meeting and training space. Just recently, we held our, um, financial software implementation, implementation training to Civic Center. We're able to set up a bunch of computers for staff to come and familiarize themselves. The Civic Center is currently staffed by three part-time employees. Civic Center Coordinator, he works Monday through Friday, um, the daytime events, the daytime events. And also, um, does, works with our guest, um, our office hours, we'll call it that. He, um, takes phone calls, makes the reservations, sets the schedule. And then the other two gentlemen, um, host the evening events, A and the weekend events. And then I provide the management and supervisory oversight of the operation, of the operation. Years of wear and tear from regular use, um, and a, just a general lack of reinvestment has led to pretty substantial deterioration in the, in the condition of the facility. Staff and myself are receiving an increasing number of complaints from our regular customer base. And we feel that just really this reflects poorly on the image that we like to portray here at the city. I'd like to cover a few of the larger items that we typically receive complaint about. Probably the, the biggest concern we have right now is the, um, the condition of the roof. The roof is eighteen years old, um, and during high wind and high rain events, um, we are receiving leaking inside the facility, which is occasionally had, literally had to have buckets out collecting rainwater, um, during events. The roof is, the, the insulation's completely soaked and it's all the way down to the decking, so that when you stand in the facility and look up at the deck, the decking, you can see where the water stains are. So we're at a point where repair is, is not an option. Any, any repair cost will be sunk to just the inevitable need to do a complete replacement. And as you can see from the slide here, um, the, the paint coating on the architectural cupolas on the roof has completely failed. We've tried recoating these twice in the last ten years and essentially the rust in the substrate has got to a point where we need to completely and completely remove and replace all the metals. And this is probably the, the most substantial expense we're looking at right now and needs to be dressed immediately because it's only gonna get worse as time goes by. Some other items to note, um, is the curtains, the large curtains that block off our storage alcoves. I was just there today and a potential customer asked what we could do about the curtains and unfortunately they're beyond repair, um, and in need of replacement. The domestic hot water heater, I'll try to run through these quickly, but the domestic hot water heater's at the end of its service life, um, needs to be replaced. The stove and the range hood in our kitchen is a very popular amenity for our weekend groups. They can keep their meals prepared. We don't necessarily serve to the public there, but private, private groups, um, do serve to themselves and they use that. The stove has become unreliable, um, and just twenty years of grime and use and buildup while it's sanitary is just not aesthetically pleasing at all. The sound system is inadequate for large groups. When the banquet hall is completely full, people have a hard time hearing the public address system. The lighting system, we've received common complaints about poor lighting in the facility. We upgraded to compact fluorescents seven or eight years ago, but as you all probably know, now that technology's become obsolete. So we need to look at a complete LED retrofit of the entire facility. Chairs are probably about twenty years old. We need to look at complete replacement of tables and chairs for three hundred guests. Updating the electric service panels, they're original to the facility. Any increase in amenities would require to, us to increase the electric capacity. The, the three part-time staff currently handle all of the custodial duties. Um, they clean up after all the events. We could really use, um, just a, either twice a year or once a year even, a professional deep clean and scrub of the facility. And probably the most common complaint that we receive is just the general overall dated worn aesthetic of the, of the entire facility from the restrooms to the front office, to the conference room and, and obviously the kitchen space. We should really consider a complete redesign and remodeling. The problem we're facing now is all these poor conditions essentially create a barrier for, from us considering any rental rate increase without an increase of the quality of the service we provide. Right now, the, the city's general fund is subsidizing a loss of between forty and fifty thousand dollars annually. The FY budget, um, calls for about fifty-eight thousand dollars in revenue while expenses can exceed, um, a hundred and eight thousand dollars. Of that hundred and eight thousand dollars, about seventy-five thousand of that is just personnel costs alone for the three part-time staff. Which leaves us about twenty-five, thirty thousand dollars for the rest of the operations. That's all our commodities, our paper goods, our cleaning supplies, um, advertising, utilities, mowing, facilities maintenance. Where we've been operating on a shoestring budget now for quite some time. All that said, um, our annual revenues have been increasing modestly over the past several years. It's a misconception if anyone thinks that the Civic Center is struggling. Our weekend events are consistently booked. It's almost impossible to get a Saturday, um, at the Civic Center. And I would say our weekday events are, our weekday time slots are probably around fifty percent capacity. The problem is just that these revenues while increasing have not kept pace with the increasing operational costs. We're looking at about, an estimate of about seventy thou, or seventy percent, um, increase in our rental rates just to close the deficit between our revenues and our operating costs. That increase, um, would not, um, come close to addressing the capital improvement needs that I just outlined there. And we'd also be kind of pricing ourselves out of the market that we wish to, we wish to, um, serve, which is a low cost, a low cost, um, meeting space. We look at the long list of required capital improvements, we're estimating that that dollar figure could range between seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand to a million dollars to completely rehabilitate the Civic Center into a viable downtown event center. And we currently have no specific capital funds set aside to address these needs. Historically, the Civic Center has had to compete for capital improvement funding against all municipal facilities' needs. We are, another thing I'd like to point to is we're in the process of hiring a consultant for our facility's master plan services. And the first phase of that process is a conditional analysis. We'll, we'll go through all of our facilities, including the Civic Center. And it's a, excuse me, it's a pretty safe assumption to say that we'll have millions of dollars of other unfunded capital improvement costs in our police stations, our fire stations, Public Works and this facility itself. So this kinda leaves us with two options. The first option would be to, as proposed in the budget, would be to close the Urbana Civic Center. That would be effective December thirty-first of this year. That option would allow us to save around forty to fifty thousand dollars annually, which is, it would be important and would contribute to the general fund deficit, deficit reduction goals that we have now. It would also allow us to defer these capital improvement investments and incorporate the Civic Center into the facilities planning efforts that are coming up. Then that would provide us the option to refurbish, sell, lease, or that would give us the best guidance on what to do with the existing facility itself. If we were to go this option, um, myself and staff would work to identify, um, alternate meeting spaces both for the community and our regular customer base, as well as working to identify, um, spaces for the city uses. And also as part of this option would be meaning the elimination of three part-time positions. And we'll work with our HR department on, um, easing that separation process. The other option, of course, is to continue to operate the Civic Center. This would require us to identify other budget reductions or revenues to offset the loss to the Civic Center. It would require us to develop a capital improvement funding plan to very quickly address, um, some of the immediate needs, including the roof and the other amenities. If we were to continue to operate, we'd have to perform some pretty quick, probably about fifteen to twenty thousand dollars worth of curtains and tables and chairs, just to address some immediate needs. But knowing that in absence of a new roof and these larger costs, that those will be sunk, sunk costs. Um, and then of course, as part of that option, we would evaluate the, um, future use of the Civic Center and the facilities planning effort as well too. At this point, we'll entertain any questions.
Questions for Vince?
Eric. So typically, how do public facilities budget for roofs? You know when you put on a new roof that after N years, you're gonna have to put on another one, although it's a little disappointing that this has only lasted eighteen years because rubber roofs generally last significantly longer than that. So somehow there was, there was a problem way back.
Speaking specifically for roofs, um, we hired a roofing consultant about two or three years ago. So we've gone through every facility. And I identified, you know, a replacement plan. It's just been, um, the lack of available funds. We've, the first priority was obviously the fire station roof, which was replaced about two years ago. While the Civic Center leaks occasionally, that roof was leaking every time it rained, um, as well as the, the fire substation. So two years ago, we replaced the fire station roof. Last year, we did a restoration project, which prevented us from having to do a full-scale roof replacement at the two fire stations, as well as, um, preventative maintenance at the Public Works facility roof to hopefully buy another four or five years. The Civic Center roof is probably, obviously next on the priority list. We were entertaining an offer from the UBA, um, to take over operations of that. Therefore, we held off on that investment, but obviously we chose not to go that route. So the Civic Center roof, um, in terms of that, large capital is number one on the list.
Historically, to answer your question...
Historically, to answer your question, we would take monies out of reserves, general fund reserves, to deal with any roof crisis that we might have. There was not any intentional funding or set aside like we do for vehicles and equipment. And I think this is something we really need to look for in the future with respect to all these capital needs for our facilities.
So, yeah, because it seems to me it's like, it's like a pension cost. You know that you're going to have this expenditure sometime in the future, so you shouldn't be surprised by it.
The first phase of the, of the upcoming facilities' planning is a conditional assessment. And one of the major deliverables of that effort is exactly that, is an outlining of all the facility's needs prioritized and the associated costs. So, we can look at whether it's a public works roof or all these other long lists. I mean, how do we rank those and what money do we need to start putting aside annually to address these needs, um, instead of obviously waiting for the water to be coming in on your head?
Aaron.
So, thanks Vince, I appreciate it, Bill. Um, we did go through the walkthrough. Uh, I did see, first of all, I'm in the Civic Center on a regular basis, somewhat regular basis, I would say, for various different events. And I would say probably a significant number of, of the folks who I represent use the Civic Center. And so, uh, I have received calls and people have stopped me and said, there's no way we want the Civic Center to close.
Sure.
Um, so a couple of questions. The hundred and eight thousand of operating costs yearly, would it be a hundred and eight thousand if everything was fixed and in working order, the way it's supposed to be?
Um...
I know seventy-five thousand it would be because that's...
Expense, expense-wise, yes. Um, we may gain some efficiencies and utilities, but we, we currently budget about five thousand dollars annually for facilities, so, I mean, we, if we were to upgrade the entire lighting to LED, we should see some savings there. A new roof, offer with white reflective, would offer some savings in utilities, but, um, I don't think it would really cut our expenses. It would, it would afford us the opportunity, opportunity to maybe pursue some rental rate increases and increase on the revenue side of things.
Right. So, you said that would require somewhere around seventy percent increase in order to break even, so to speak.
Right. Just to, just to make the revenues match the expenses, to gain that extra.
And for places like Civic Center, very similar to a nursing home, we would want some things in our county or our cities because it's good for the citizens. It's what we want for our, our citizens and we want a place like the Civic Center.
Sure.
So, um, moving on to another aspect of that question, the roof would be the most important piece because we can't have buckets, right, catching water.
Right.
While you're having events, there's a liability and, of course, that's just not what we want to represent as the city. Roof cost, if we had to replace that roof, completely replace it, what's that cost?
We, we have a budget figure of around three hundred thousand dollars. Now, keep in mind, there are lesser expensive options, but then what you end up with is a roof that's completely failed in eighteen years. The roof that we've proposed for that three hundred thousand dollar cost is a thirty-year warranty with, and it does include the, the metal, the metal coverings on the couplas as well, too.
So, the, the roof that we paid for eighteen, eighteen years ago, was that a new roof that was put on eighteen years ago?
From my understanding, yes. So, it's failed after eighteen years. Um, we're looking at a higher-end roofing system with, that has, like we did with the fire station, that actually has manufacturer inspections built into the warranty. So, a year or two, the contractor who installed the roof is responsible for doing the inspection and final punch list. But then at five, at five, ten, fifteen, and twenty years, the manufacturer is required to send their technician and do a documented walkthrough of that roof and correct any deficiencies up until the warranty's ended. I mean, I think it's, it's well worth the investment, um, just in both, you know, operating cost and total life cycle of the, of the, of the capital improvement.
So, I, I don't know, maybe Jim, maybe this is a legal question, but, um, I've certainly seen where folks have, just private citizens have bankrolled a new facility and decatered or something like that. So, if, you know, the possibility of raising money from the public, we saw this take place for, uh, the, uh, women's facility. Uh, is, are there any legal concerns that we would have if, for instance, we did a GoFundMe? I, I don't know, I'm just throwing ideas out. Can you raise money from the public like that, um, or does it have to be initiated by a citizen?
Well, it, it probably should, you know, to be very conservative approach and avoid any sense of impropriety, it should be either a private citizen like a foundation, like the Library Foundation that raises money all the time. Uh, there's nothing wrong with the city setting up a foundation for those kinds of projects. Could be set up as a 501(c)(3), uh, which would allow contributors to deduct, but, you know, there are communities who have tried that. Uh, Columbia, Missouri tried that and they decided to go completely different route. There is a private funding group in, uh, east central Illinois, I forget the exact name, but it's arises out of the former community chest, and that is what the Public Arts, uh, group have started with and our Legacy Tree program has started with. If we have city employees or officials out pounding the pavement for money, there is a good chance that some people who donate money would also be doing business with the city. And to the extent they are treated any differently, you get into impropriety, i.e., uh, the appearance of bribery. We have to avoid that. Uh, probably the best, again, depending on how committed the community is and who would run this thing, would be setting up a foundation like the Library has. That foundation is very successful. It has bought property for the Library. It has helped, uh, raise funds for, uh, capital repair, books, programs, et cetera. But again, somebody would have to have the spark who would want to do that, and then they'd have to know how to fundraise.
I just wanted to be the spark to start that fire. Hopefully, somebody will jump on. It's a very important resource for us in the community. Lots of folks who, I mean, I know we're talking about going over to Lincoln Square, but you, you have lots of different concerns about that, the, it's just not the same space. I, I do share some of the concerns around the PSA system, the, the stove. I mean, there's various different concerns. I saw the curtains, I saw the water damage. Um, it's, it's not a good representation in its current state, uh, but it is a tremendous asset for the community. So, uh, just have one other thing and then I'll, I'll let this go. Um, there's going to be a facility study. We've talked about that quite a bit.
Correct.
And you're saying that the Civic Center will be a part of that. But when we do the study and it says all those things that need to be done and all these buildings that need to be repaired, where does the money come from to refurbish the Civic Center? So unless we do something, I guess I couldn't call it proactive, it's still reactive, um, but unless we do something to preserve it, just because we do the study and it's a part of the refurbished plan, all these things still have to be done and that we still have to come up with the money from somewhere. So, I just, I don't know what's, when we think about the facilities' study that's going to be done.
Sure.
It tells us all the needs that we have, but it doesn't generate any revenue for us, so...
Agree, but it, it'll help us prioritize what we need, where we need to start with. I mean, because we've had, we've got similar concerns...
I would say the leaking roofs.
Absolutely. Uh, I mean, in terms of priority, I mean, life, life and health, health and safety is number one. Um, number two, I look at is, you know, how does it impact our operational needs? I mean, say, we say it's an overhead door for the fire station. I mean, if that door doesn't go up when it's supposed to and they have to back out, then that's, that's time, you know, which, so when we look at all these needs and we look at the dollars amounts associated, which are staggering, which I, I assume they will be, I mean, at least we'll, we'll know we can start to plan proactively and not reactively, um, like you just mentioned. Thank you. Welcome.
Dennis.
Yeah. I certainly have received a lot of communication of concern about this proposal to close the Civic Center. And, um, you know, without a solid roof that's not leaking, you know, you, um, this is, this facility is going to just deteriorate some more. And I don't see how you can avoid treating, making repairs to the roof. I mean, it's not going to help to just close the facility and pretend like we're not going to be doing anything with it for the next two years or three years without, um, conserving the roof so that if we're, it was going to go up for sale, which I don't recommend, um, you know, it's, it's, uh, the damage is accumulating, you know? I mean, we've had other buildings here in the city where, um, the bad roof, you know, was addressed and it saved the buildings, and we should be doing the same thing for the Civic Center. Um, I just think about the successes at the Civic Center that I've experienced in the last year. And mistletoe market comes immediately to mind. The place was crammed with artisans, shoppers, and there was such a joyful and excited atmosphere during that, um, pre-Christmas event. It, it's hard to believe that this would like be the similar or, it seems to belie the fact that, that people find the Civic Center unpleasant and useless. And, you know, maybe the problem is serving food, maybe it's the kitchen. So maybe from now on, one of the policies would be only catered food comes in and the individuals who wish to have that food service arrange it with a local caterer. That would eliminate our need to probably do corrections to the, the kitchen on an immediate level, maybe for a couple of years or until a policy was changed. But I agree with Aaron Adams. Uh, I mean, we could probably make the facilities, um, planning list ourselves. You probably could draw it for us because you're aware of all the things that are, are failing in the, in these different buildings. We don't have to have a, I doubt that we really do need to have a special council come in and tell us what those things are. And then, you know, it's true, where's the funding to make any kind of change? Um, until this council or the mayor finds funding to start addressing these issues, we, we're just talking in our hats. We're going to have a list, it's going to be on the shelf, and as so many of our plans are, nothing's going to be happening. So, um, yeah, this is a real issue and, um, it's not a very pleasant one. And I, I mean, I'm not sure that I'm not willing to look for some kind of median solution to this. But this is just, this is just a discussion item, so we're not making any solutions now, but I certainly would like, um, your departments to come forward and say, well, we could proceed with, uh, major events, but we'd have to give up parties or anybody that, you know, wants to bring in, um, you know, try to cook or warm up foods in the building. I mean, there are things that we could do that would kind of maybe make it available to the larger groups of people who really would like to use it, I think.
Mayor Marlon.
Just wanted to clarify one thing. The facility study is more than identifying the, and describing the condition of the buildings. One of the reasons you do a study like this is to look at your current programming needs, what you foresee the needs are going to be in the future, and how you're utilizing space and how people are working, not only in perhaps space that you think you need, but the space we have now. We currently have people working in closets in the basement and furnace, in, in, I can't even, I don't even know how to describe the rooms in the basement. There's pipes with stuff hanging down over their heads. We've got, the, half the accounting department is in a little tiny cubby hole in the basement. We've got the police evidence room on top of the, on top of the, um, IT and finance departments, and when they bring in certain kinds of evidence, that's pretty pungent and, you know, there's, there's odd working conditions down there. I mean, we, we have many, many space needs. So, one of the reasons you do a study like this is how are we utilizing space? How are we going to work together in the future? Are people working, are the right people working in proximity to each other? So, it's not just developing a laundry list of needs. We already have that, although the last one was done, what, twenty years ago? And it's not going to go on the shelf, but as Vince pointed out, it does help us set priorities and, uh, uh, whether we like it or not, we're at a position in, in, in the city right now where we have to make some very tough choices and, and really establish priorities as far as, as, um, where we use our resources. And, and this information is going to help us do this. Nobody, nobody likes any of the decisions we're faced with in this upcoming budget, but, but that's where we're at. And our goal is to get ourselves on a sound financial footing and to reverse some of the trends that have been taken in the last few years as far as our budget goes with the idea that we will, thank you, that we will position ourselves for the future. So, so none of these decisions were taken lightly. We haven't actually made the decision and there'll be a lot of discussion between now and when the budget is, is passed, but just, just to be clear, this is not just a laundry list of needs and, um, and there's a lot more to it than that.
If I could just ask a few questions and we can go around again.
Sure.
Okay. Um, I think people have touched on, on a lot of my concerns. Um, I, I like Aaron's idea about trying to raise money from individuals. It'd be great if you could raise it from one individual. I was kind of curious about naming rights. Has anybody thought about what the naming rights for the Civic Center would be? I mean, Civic Center, you gotta admit, it's pretty boring. Um, seems like somebody out there might want their name on it for twenty years and maybe that's worth two or three hundred thousand dollars, I don't know. Um, and maybe we could, you know, suggest that in this interim period and see if anybody comes forward. So, that's just kind of one thought. As far as the kitchen use goes, do you know, have any idea what percentage of groups actually use the kitchen?
Um, the kitchens are primarily our weekend, weekend events and maybe, maybe, uh, maybe a third of those events would actually use, use the kitchen, maybe, maybe less than that actually. But when it's, when, when they come to schedule in advance, um, if it's not working, when they show up, if the stove has an issue with the pilot light, then obviously they have the capacity to cause a big impact on the event and once or twice we've had to do a refund because of that.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, it is, I mean, it's probably the only space I can think of that's real convenient about, with your, a kitchen you can use.
Sure.
I think the Park District might have that at Phillips Center, but...
And that's one of our major selling points is for, you know, folks to be able to choose their own caterer, bring their own food in. A lot of event spaces, you're limited to what they, what they offer there at the facility.
And then as far as, um, how often it gets divided up into smaller areas? I know that takes a lot of time and energy of staff. Do, are the weekend events mostly big, open, the, the whole, whole facility?
Right. The, the weekend events, we only will divide it into a half. Um, and we're, almost exclusively, the whole banquet hall for those, for those weekend events. During the week, we'll, um, we'll divide up into halves, um, depending upon the nature of the events and sometimes even down, if it's a small, thirty people or less, we'll just rent out a quad, one quadrant of the, of the building. But the staff responsible, he has for putting those walls up and down, sometimes two or three times a week to accommodate those changeovers.
Um, and then, let's see, I thought there was one more. Oh, as far as for-profit and nonprofit, I know for the, uh, nonprofit, we charge much less than we would for a for-profit company. Do we get very many for-profit companies? Seems like almost everything I've gone to, there's nonprofit.
Very, very few, very few. If you want to charge admission at the door for, if you're hosting a party and you want to charge admission, then that'll be a profit rate. Um, if you're specifically, if you're a corporation trying to sell your wares, then we'll charge you the profit rate, but that's very rare that we have that.
So, the published rate is seven twenty-five or seven fifty for the whole room for the whole day on the weekends for the profit is really come, what we usually get is four fifty or something for the nonprofit?
I would say, no, I'd say, you know, for a typical Saturday wedding, um, it ranges from eight hundred to twelve hundred dollars. Still want to reserve the whole banquet space for the entire day to allow them to come in in the morning and set up the facility, um, and then obviously tear down in the evening. And sometimes if the Sunday is available, they'll rent that Sunday morning to come back the next day to do their, to do their tear down.
And then the revenue, I guess, averages out to about twelve hundred dollars a week. Is that right?
Um...
Six fifty-two weeks, about sixty thousand dollars.
Right.
So, we aren't getting a wedding every weekend, I guess?
Not every weekend, I'd say, I'd say, but the large, the large weekend events are our primary revenue source. Um, the, the evening time, you know, for seventy-five dollars for one quad or for half the building for one evening session, obviously, we're not, we're not making any profit on that because of the staffing, but like I said, we use the larger weekend events to make up for that so we can afford to let the smaller clubs that have very little or no operating budget have a place to come and meet with us to, to double their rates. Could basically force them out of the Civic Center.
I, I think you mentioned you looked at what it would cost, um, to maybe just be open weekends and if you just, if you could staff it with one person instead of three part-time, you could have one part-time and just be open weekends.
The problem with the, with the weekend-only scenario is that we still have to accommodate our office hours. We still have to have... We still have to have someone there to answer the phones, to return the phone calls, to meet with guests, to get the setups, collect the revenue. So currently, our Civic Center coordinator, his, his hours are from 7:00 AM to 1:00 Monday through Friday. And while he's doing, answering the phones and taking care of that as well as the scheduling and the questions, I mean, for every one event that we book, there may be 10 that call up and ask questions and don't. So while he's handling all that, he still manages to staff the daytime events while he's already there. So maybe the weekend evenings would be an opportunity, but still we, we have groups that, that's the time period they need for their folks to come to their events.
Okay. Yeah, I have one more, but let's go around again. I think Eric was first.
So, yeah, this is a pretty dismal conversation because I actually really like the ambiance in the Civic Center. I really, aesthetics are very individual, but I really like the brick and the wood and the way they, what, what environment that creates. I like Bill's idea of seeing if we could sell naming rights. I mean, I used to go to the Assembly Hall and now, of course, that's not there anymore. Now it's the State Farm Center, so Flexing Gate Civic Center, I don't know, who, who knows? But the, uh, but that's something actually to pursue, I think, really, is, 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 is naming rights. I think that of some individual or business donor. I guess the other thing that I would, would really help me be able to swallow this would be beginning now conversations with people who use the facility and figuring out with them that there really are suitable alternatives. Now, there are some things, some, some things that seem to make perfectly good sense. So for example, I mean, we have photography show in Lincoln Square. Craft show seems to me could fit in Lincoln Square equally well, probably. I don't know about wedding receptions or, or dinners, although we do have an underutilized food court. I mean, it, and of course, the Lincoln Square is not under our control. That's privately owned, so that, that would require... But if we could catalyze some appropriate interactions that would help, you know, figure out, help people figure out what their alternatives are, then I would feel more, more sanguine about, about closing it. And I have no objection to naming it after almost anybody. I would have some reservations about some people who have a lot of money, but I won't name them. But, but for the most part, I think almost anybody who'd be willing to bail that place out, you know, to make it solvent, would love to name it after them.
Mayor Marlin.
Couple of points. We, we, should this go forward, we will work to identify alternative venues and I can say that there's already interest in the community about providing space that we may not necessarily think about now. Secondly, I think it's important that people learn a little bit about the history of the Civic Center and what we are calling the Civic Center today isn't actually what was planned to be the Civic Center. It's the, what we're using today as the Civic Center was designed as the atrium and some meeting space that actually served as the entrance to what was the very, very large recreational facility that was going to be called the Civic Center. And it would have filled up almost the entire parking lot of what's now the Save-A-Lot grocery store. So people were raising money, actually through garage sales back in the 60s to buy, to purchase the land where the Save-A-Lot store is now. They did not make it, so what was constructed was this 5,000-square-foot atrium entryway, which became what we're calling now the Civic Center. So it really wasn't even designed for what we are using it for today. It's served, you know, the community for the last 40 years, but if you look at the old plans, it's, it's a very, it was dwarfed by the original vision for the Civic Center. But the, the rest of the property was never purchased and the, the money was never raised. So, so if anyone wants to see the, the original plans, I can send them to you.
Dennis. Maybe this will be the last comment. I mean, we're just talking, but, well, I was interested in your comment that the UBA was interested in, in the space at one time, and it also reminds me that the UBA has offices and staff and that if we reduced Public Works staff down to one person on the weekend and you're thinking about who's going to answer phones, maybe we can engage the UBA to that service because you can answer a phone from any place in the world, but certainly any place in Urbana, and you don't have to maintain an office in the building. And you can arrange, and, and really, you know, maybe what we need is a very effective online website for booking so that people can look to see what's available and what's been booked, what the prices are for various things, and sign themselves up and then just connect with Public Works or whomever to make the payments. So there are ways of working around and reducing staff and still having a facility, even if it's only part-time or on the weekends.
Mayor Marlin.
The UBA was interested, or at least considered the option of moving offices to the Civic Center and running the facility, but it was conditioned on the city investing the $500,000 to $1 million in upgrading the facility first.
And then I had just one question on the budgeting process for, in the, as far as the facilities' capital improvements go. I know last year we had this section at the end of the capital improvements plan with the facility's projected expenses. Never, I don't think, had any funding identified, but it did have estimates and the $325,000 for the Civic Center roof is in there supposedly going to happen this year. So there's other things in there, like $365,000 for Public Works roof replacement next year. So I think it kind of goes back to what Aaron was saying, or maybe everybody was saying, that we need to come up with a plan on how to fund these things. This page is missing from the capital improvements plan this year, and I understand there's some kind of new fund transfer. Do you want to try and explain that? I mean, different funds set up for it, or should I wait and ask Elizabeth? Is there, is there a fund set up for the facilities' capital improvements expenses? What used to be on this page?
This fiscal year, in lieu of a large spreadsheet with unfunded projects, we're, we're just identifying $50,000 reserve line fund for emergency purposes for facilities' needs, knowing that starting this year, the unconditional assessment will help us put together a spreadsheet similar to that, was it, what was in the 2017 plan, but with firmer numbers and with better prioritization, looking across the whole department as a whole. So our concern is that we don't want to go running off and spending $300,000 on a, on a roof replacement project and as part of this cumulative effort and study, realize that that money was better spent. So we're going to take the time to put a, get together a good plan and only address emergency needs over the next year. So hopefully by this time next, when we're here presenting, we'll have a thoroughly documented with probable construction costs backed up by, by a solid study to look at the true costs and needs for facilities moving into the future.
Okay. Thanks. Thank you very much. It's all good information.
Thank you.
Any other, everybody's finished with their questions for now? Okay. We have a couple of staff reports. Overhead sewer program reimbursement. Justin.
Good evening. Excuse me. I have two items under staff report for tonight. The first is overhead sewer program. And, excuse me, back in February of this year, we presented on the overhead sewer program and proposed changes with the intention of later providing an ordinance for council approval. Since that time, legal division or department has determined that we don't need to adopt an ordinance to, and then adopt this into the city code in order to administer this program. As long as it's included in our capital improvement plan and our annual budget, then we effectively are operating this program. So with that, we will still make the two changes previously discussed, which are to increase the maximum reimbursement from $4,500 to $5,250 and reduce the, the number of estimates required for that application from three down to two. So with that, there's no council action required for that program, but I'd be happy to answer any questions if there are some.
Any questions for Justin? Aaron?
Could you repeat why this, what, what changes were made that would not need counsel?
So we originally were going to include this program in the city code, similar to our pavement reimbursement program that we updated earlier this year, but this program was never adopted into the city code. And so in order to make these changes, we don't have to change the city code to do that. And as we budget for it each year in our capital improvement plan, we don't need to include it in the city code in order to continue administering the program. So essentially, we can make these changes as long as the budget allows for it and it will not be included in the city code.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Dennis.
But wouldn't it be wiser and maybe more transparent to have this added to the city code as an ordinance or as any other sewer benefit project that we already have now?
That, I guess that might be a legal question. I mean, we, I guess there is always the potential that we decide to, to not offer this program and for that reason, we would want it to be permanent in some fashion. So I, I don't know if it's, I guess it's not something we have to adopt into the city code, as I understand it.
Is it a goal of your department that someday it will be?
I, I don't, I guess that, I'm not sure about, on that one.
Okay. Just was wondering.
As far as a goal, this is probably the best program that a city can devise to prevent sanitary sewer backups in a lower level in a basement. We would, could not come anywhere near spending enough money to prevent that within the system itself. So this is by far the most cost-effective way and since it helps us too, not only the resident, but the city also, in avoiding 10 to 100 times the expense in trying to reduce backups in basements. So as director, I would fully endorse the program as a very cost-effective program. It removes the unpleasant trees of such backups that occur, can occur in a basement if it rains long enough and hard enough. Unfortunately, this can happen in the sanitary sewer system, even though they're not technically designed to transport rainwater. That's the main cause for the backups to occur. The program's been in place for how many years? 20 years or?
Since 19...
Anyway, it's been in place for a long time and it's something that we became aware of 20-plus years ago. And the cities have all kind of shoulder to shoulder have come up with identical programs and the sanitary district actually pitches in 25% of the reimbursement costs. So we all realize it. EPA, I think, is endorsing the program too. So if you ask, is this a goal? Yes.
Thank you.
With respect to the anomaly of it not being codified, legal told us it didn't need to be, so hence the presentation tonight, but yes, it is budgeted to reimburse folks to that level. And it's increasing and reflecting the increased costs.
I totally support the program. I mean, it's a great program. I just thought it was interesting that we were not going to put this into the city code when we put many things, including legacy trees, as I recall, into the city code, so...
I received our legal advice and we're following it accordingly, but for 20 years, it's worked really well.
Aaron?
I know we've done quite a bit of work on, as we talked about, the sewer system or the sanitary concerns that Dr. Ellis subdivision, folks have been talking about for a long time. We looked at demographics and things like that all over the city where those sewer systems were concerned. Do, do we have anything like that for this? Like, what are the primary areas within the city where we see an issue like this or houses with this type of concern? Do we have that type of analysis?
We do. I mean, we track through this program. We track, you know, we have a map that shows where all of these have done. That wasn't included in this packet, I believe it was in the last, the previous meeting. It was in that packet. And so these really are spread all over town. We find it really where we have older homes that are, that have lower level, like half basement or full basement plumbing, and then they're disconnected directly to the sanitary sewer with no other mechanism in place to prevent water from coming back from the sanitary sewer. So that's where the city and the sanitary district, we have the shared interest of keeping that water out of people's homes because of the, you know, the, the goal of preventing all sanitary sewer overflows. And, and that's where we provide these funds for this ejector pit and pump installation. So it, they're really found all over town. There's not, I wouldn't say a concentrated area. It just depends on the condition of the home and its relationship with the sanitary sewer.
Is there any sort of policy that we put forth going forward that says that we, that developers or folks who are building homes can no longer use this, so that, that's already in place?
Yeah, and that's, yeah, it's, I believe that is part of the building code for the city now, is that a home with a basement must include this system to prevent that backup. So a, a new home with a basement in Urbana must be built with an ejector pump and pit to prevent, or to provide the same, you know, assurance that we are doing through this program to older homes.
I would, I would still be interested in seeing a map of it, what it, what it looks like, you know, throughout the city, where the homes are, where this is taking place. Because there has to be some point where developers just knew, okay, we can't do this anymore, it doesn't work. It's not even necessarily a policy of the, the city. You would just think after a while, with enough complaints, they would realize that you can't, I mean, you, you can't use that system anymore. If there was a time, was it 1980, 1990, when all, when we discovered that this doesn't work or it doesn't, it needs to be improved? Do you know, Bill?
No, like, state law, is it, Jen? Plumbing code? This requirement?
It was always there.
And that this occurred in, do you remember what timeframe? Yeah. I, I, I can't tell you the timeframe, but it's, it's law now to do, so...
Okay, thank you.
Mayor?
That map was included, I believe, in the February 26 council packet when we discussed this last time.
Okay, I'll look it up. Well, yeah, all right.
Okay, thank you. And then were you also going to do the sanitary sewer map?
Yes. So at that same meeting back in February, we discussed the availability of sewer maps to residents for the city. So the Public Works Department was asked to, to look at, could we make sewer maps available maybe through the city website or through some public access online for residents to, to look up where their sanitary or storm sewer is located relative to their house? So what we state in the memo is that we don't recommend that and I can get into those reasons. But before I do that, I'd stress that, you know, we're in no way wanting to make this information unavailable to people. We are always happy to provide that information. It's, or only a phone call away or an email, you know, and people have questions. And we do deal with this on a weekly basis with residents or people that are even considering buying a house and they want to know, where's the sanitary sewer? Have there ever been any problems? So this information's definitely readily available. Reasons that we, we can't really recommend making it available... So this information's definitely readily available. Reasons that we, we can't really recommend making it available online is, are that, you know, firstly, we, we share a lot of information with local agencies, like City of Champaign, the sanitary district. We have a joint committee, sanitary sewer technical committee, that is responsible for creating construction standards. And, and we share our maps with, with them. And due to the kind of interconnectivity of our sanitary sewer systems, to share our information would be sharing a lot of information of other agencies as well. Another reason that we, we wouldn't recommend that is that we, we really use that, kind of that first phone call to facilitate a conversation between Public Works and whoever is going to be doing work on their house or on their sanitary sewer line. So that, A, we know what they're planning on doing and we can help them, help to make sure they get the appropriate permit and, and do things the right way. And then B, to help them understand maybe what the real root of their problem is. A lot of times, you know, people's first call will be, especially when they're having a backup, might be to a contractor who will then come out and offer to fix all their problems for a pretty high dollar amount. And, and so the thing we always like to stress when we speak in public is that the first call should always be to the city. Because in a lot of cases, you know, it's something, or a lot of times, it's something that city staff can, can help them with in the short term and in the long term. So, so again, that acts, or that request for information regarding the sewer map is really helpful to, to start that conversation and, and get everyone on board. So if there, there was one other item on this, I included a map. Another part of that conversation or discussion last time was requesting information on the location of sewers relative to, to homes. And so we did a quick classification of all the sanitary sewers through the city that are city-owned and where they, where they lie relative to the street, putting them in three main categories, in the middle of the street, on one side of the street or the other, and then in backyards. So that's shown on the map attached to the sewer memo at the back. And what we see is there's a pretty even split, all within 30 to 36%. So those three categories fall pretty evenly relative to the, to where they are in the house. And that's just estimated by selecting a sewer line, classifying it, and then adding up all those footages of where they are. So this isn't necessarily by counting each parcel and how, where their sewer runs to the, to the house, but, but where that sewer line is relative to most of the houses or relative to the street in that area.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, that was a really useful map. Anybody have any questions? Eric?
So the map that you did provide, basically that's a more coarse-grained version of the detailed map that you're saying you don't really want to post, but this coarse-grained version is fine.
Well, and, and that, yeah, so that, that map does show the sewers throughout town and that's definitely at a higher scale. So it'd be hard to determine too much from the purpose of this map that was attached to this memo is to show by, you know, the categorization of where are those sewers in relation to the street. So all the green sewers shown on this map are under street pavement, or all the blue sewers are in the parkway or the front yard. And then all the red sewers would be backyard sewers. But, and yeah, but as far as the information sharing goes, we're always happy to provide that information too, even at that scale.
It looks to me as though, in general, the older parts of the city have the sewers under the street. And the more recently developed have the sewers either in the parkway or the front yard or the back or the side yard. So somehow practices changed, it looks to me, it looks like, yeah.
Yeah, and, and I think that's just a function over time of where is it convenient to build it? And then where is it convenient to maintain it? And, and so that's definitely changed towards, you know, from the public works standpoint, we don't really like backyard sewers. But from a homeowner's standpoint, having a sewer on one side of the street or the other has led to increased costs in some cases, which is why we improved the pavement reimbursement program.
Thank you. Any questions for Justin? We have a couple of public inputs on this subject, or one public input either read. Did you want to speak?
Etha, Etha?
Etha Reed?
Yeah.
Oh, Etha, Etha Reed.
Thank you. My name is Etha Reed. My address is 1307 West Tree Mountain. I'm concerned now about property mostly at 1205 Ellis Drive, which I've mentioned before. It's a bi-level with a basement. And I have a granddaughter there with children. And I mentioned about how the sewage backed up and maybe some of them kind of hold in your mind where I said even with Thanksgiving Day, when she had guests even coming from out of town, but she had just got this new home to move into and all that flow up, we walked in and just the sewage just hit us. And this was a couple of years ago. But now, recently, we have had some backup again since like the last time we had the heavy rains. And just within the last couple of weeks, we had some little work being done and Remar going to get floor tile put in for and stuff. Found out the young man found we have mold tremendously behind the walls. When he started pulling the tile and the baseboards away from the floor to put down new tile, he started going and pulling some more from the drywall. So I've had to have the drywall ripped out. Right now, it's under construction. So this that I had been complaining about for the last two years. My grandbaby in Hudson Bay was living in this house with mold. We started having sewage people come out and, but when it rained again, there we go. Had no idea that what had gotten to this limit, that mold was growing. And she just recently had a baby. She said we have a two-month-old baby that was also in the household, which we had to. Now it's just a family of five that we had, I had to replace.
Hey, Aaron. I don't know, Ms. Reed, if this is a question for you, but I was just, you said it's a bi-level home?
Yes.
So does it, is it this program that we were just discussing?
Yeah, so this, you know, lower level plumbing would be eligible for the overhead sewer program, especially with reports, previous reports of sewer backups. This is, that's exactly the situation this program is intended to, to remediate.
And so in a situation like what Ms. Reed was just describing, when there's all these other complications that come behind it, to what extent does this program address those concerns? Or is it just the primary issues of, of the backup?
So this program will only address the sewer pump installation. It's really strictly for providing the pump and the check valve and all the, you know, the electrical work that goes into that. But it's very specific to those components.
So I guess you know that, I mean, I guess we have the information to reach out and be sure that
Yeah.
that this home is, is eligible for the, for the pump installation and, and the reimbursement for that.
Yeah, we can be sure to provide the information to help with the, that, you know, program application.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah.
Okay, the next item is the brick sidewalk discussion.
Excuse me, my name was on there to speak on this issue.
Oh, you wanted to speak? I didn't see that.
You're not. I just want to be in order.
Okay. Dr. Evelyn, Reverend Dr. Evelyn Underwood?
You say 2A, 6A, 6A?
Yeah, and 6A.
Yes. Okay, it was relating to this issue. And like in 1998, this joint committee, as was said in the memo, and we were at that last meeting. And, and in 2013, when it increased the amount, he already talked about it, and I don't want to take up all my time with that. And what I wanted to make sure, now I see that you're not going to codify it. But, so if you're not going to codify it or put it as part of the code, we want to ensure that everybody, just like Mother Reed and people in our area, know about it. At last time at the meeting, in the February meeting, we made sure when we saw it that we got to many people to let them know that it's a possibility because of how their house is. They should know about this information. And I think that was one of the houses, that one. And so we want to make sure, if it's not codified or part of the code, that every area, people in there, because there are two or three other families in our area who, they're not here tonight, but it was problematic for them. So if it's not going to be codified or put in the code, we want to make sure that people know about it. So I think in 1998, I, I've never heard of it until, I don't know how the whole community would have known, you know. And then in 2013, when the amount was increased, you know, so like 18 or 19 years, and then in 2003, five years ago. But until you said something about it in February, you know, that's the first time I've heard. But I've been knowing that a lot of people, not a lot, but certain people in our area, they were having concerns. And even a person not in our area, who happened to be my daughter, in another area, and she did call. And, but she didn't qualify, but she wouldn't have known if we hadn't have known here. So if it's not going to be codified or be a part of the code, somehow it can't be a secret. People are going to have to find out about it. And, and I don't know how, and that, that was my concern. They need to find out about it so they can put those, Bishop, I guess, sewer ejector pumps and, you know, put the information, the materials that they need so they, they don't injure, injure their house, houses, damage, you know, the houses, their property. So they need to know about it. I've written it all down, but I don't want to take, take the time. They need to install the overhead sewer systems and all, and get the assistance, $8,000 to $10,000. So, you know, we don't need that, but there are a lot of people, not a lot, but certain people that I know in our area might need that. So, thank you.
Dennis?
Hey, Justin. So this looks like this memo is pretty inclusive, although there might be a more inclusive form that you have for information. Would it be possible to include this in, you know, like say the springtime sewer utility tax bill that goes out?
Yeah, that's something we discussed before.
That would go to every single homeowner who receives help through the sanitary sewer tax, service tax.
Right.
And a piece of paper like this could be included in the bill and, and for whatever, maybe you'd have to like sort it out between cities or whatever. But that would be one way to distribute it fairly and evenly to all people who are residents of Urbana.
I, I think that's something that would be possible. The sanitary district handles billing.
The sanitary just is part of.
But that's something I believe we've done in the past. So that's something that we can definitely include.
I'd just recommend that we try it.
Yeah, and, and there is, you know, this program, as well as other programs, have been on the city website for a number of years.
Yeah, not everybody goes to see website on a regular basis.
And, and again, just contacting Public Works anytime you have a sewer problem is the other thing I'll stress. But that's, you know, we, we have discussed more, our better ways of kind of raising awareness on the programs that are available for these sort of issues. So that's definitely something we could consider.
Great, I recommend it.
Thanks, Aaron.
Yeah, so listen, I have had numerous conversations, whether it's conversations around minority participation for, and, and knowing about RFPs and all that different type of thing. There was a recent conversation that I've had with the mayor about a problem that my neighbor had. And then this, this situation, and hearing Ms. Reed come and talk about this once again, something that she shared here publicly with the council a couple of years ago, how it got past all of us and Public Works to hear her say that she had a problem when it rained, maybe we were all thinking that it was in the lateral that was the problem because it's in Dr. Ellis subdivision. But how, how could we miss this and have this family now subject to this, even though they've come here publicly and spoke about it? Right? So what I'm speaking to is a, is a different attitude in relationship to talking to the public about issues, as opposed to us saying, hey, it's on the website, we put it in the news gazette, give us a call. You know, that's just not sufficient anymore, right? You know, and it's never been sufficient because there's some people who are going to embrace technology, feel comfortable coming and, or, or giving the city a call. But some of these programs, people are just like, you know what, this must be how it is, so I'm going to just deal with it. But to have someone come and share a couple of years ago about a concern, and still we have a program and somehow it gets missed, I think that's, that's where we need to revisit our own approach to dealing with the public. And in particular, in dealing with Dr. Ellis, folks in Dr. Ellis subdivision and the community where I think typically we just don't have the desire to dig any deeper, right? And it's just work that we need to do as staff and as, as council members, as people in the city, to address some of these types of concerns. Because all we had to do was ask a couple of other questions and have a different type of concern. And I think it could have been addressed before waiting until I having to address it now. So I just wanted to make that comment.
Okay, thanks. Diane?
Well, that's one of the reasons that we've always said, and this is from the time I, I know when I joined the council, is when there was a sewer lateral issue, we asked people and stressed to people, is call the city first because that's how we can find out and how staff can talk to people about their options. And that's what we depend on, not only the staff to do, but actually that's what responsibilities for us as elected officials is to make sure people understand that that should be their first course of action. So when, when all of us are out public or communicating with constituents, that should be one of the messages that we constantly get across. And, and, but again, it's that call to the city when there's a backup because that way you can learn about your options.
Mr. Mayor, I see the city came out to us and one of them just explained to me how messed up it was, the way it's connected. And that's why we have this problem. And because I was thinking it was just like something wrong with the sewer, maybe in the house or something. And he said it's just the way it been connected up. Of course, they can't do it anymore, what he says, but they should mess you guys up.
Okay. I think we should move on with the agenda items and hopefully staff can get this worked out. Okay, next is the sidewalk, the brick sidewalk discussion. Was there going to be a presentation on that?
I think you may have missed.
Oh. I thought these were just... Okay. Elders Melinda Carr?
Thank you. Good evening, Elders Melinda Carr. And I just wanted to mention, related to, and probably come back next week because I wasn't able to. I didn't realize we were going to have something on the sewer map today and that we haven't had a meeting today. But anyway, the question, one of the questions I have is the criteria, criteria for residents to be reimbursed for this overhead sewer program, meaning it mentions a heavy rainfall, other things that may happen. How, how does a resident determine that they have a problem, other than that, that they're going to be reimbursed? They have a backup, but it's not due to a heavy rainfall? And Ms. Reed, who was already mentioned before, I was going to say something about the illegal connection. So a resident who may have a problem, which she did- So a resident who may have a problem, which she did call more than once, and when she came and spoke before the council more than once, even at the February, I think the February meeting she was at, if I'm not mistaken, spoke about some of the issues that have happened at that residence and mentioned that she called. And I think if we go back to the video, we see that some responses were made. I remember specifically responses were made, and nothing was done to respond to her situation, to call her. So we just need help here. So illegal connections, what happens? What's the process for when someone thinks they may have an illegal connection or even have been confirmed that one is there? And nothing has been done? And now the mold there? And we have a program that's been sitting around for 18 years? No communication? We just get a, we got a newsletter recently about the grant funds, the first time ever that I know. I've been there since 2016, but residents I've talked to, and even the Underwoods, have never seen information come. So why couldn't this have been communicated to the residents about a program that is supposed to be a universal program? Applies to more than one, it's not a unique program because it's being used all over the city, and funds are being set aside in a budget. Set aside in a, in the budget, which is what we're asking for in our unique situation. So I don't understand. I'm still having some problem understanding that a committee got together to propose a program to help residents all over the city. And we have a resident coming who has come more than once, been here very long time, her and her husband and family, very established, and can get help. So those are some of the comments. Apparently there's no income requirement for this program. And as in reference to the sewer map, which I didn't have on my topic, so I don't know if it's fair for me to comment on that now. So I'll wait for next week. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Bill.
Aaron.
I'm sorry, but, in fact, I'm not sorry, actually. But one of the things that I want to say that I take full responsibility for is to make sure that I have clarity as well. So as the representative for Ward Three, where these concerns are being raised in particular in relationship to the sewer lateral, I certainly could have gotten more clarity. I was definitely under the impression that what we were dealing with was always a sewer lateral problem. It didn't cross my mind that we were dealing with a pump issue until we started talking about this, as Dr. Underwood, as you said. I learned about it when we talked about it in February as well. And I do think that at that particular point, it is incumbent upon, and it is the experience of Public Works and folks like that to say, wait a minute, did I hear something about heavy rainfall? There's this other program, it's to investigate to see if we have ejector pump issues there. And I don't, I've never heard from Public Works or from Bill or anyone saying that we went into Dr. Ellis' subdivision to investigate to see if that was a part of any of the concerns. It was always discussed as if it was a sewer lateral issue. And so, to my knowledge, right? And I don't, I'm not doing this to try to point fingers. All I'm saying is that if we're going to dig and we're going to investigate, then let's look at all aspects that, things that could exist. Why didn't we think that it was an ejector issue in, in Dr. Ellis' subdivision? Why did we just conclude that it was a lateral issue? So hopefully, I think what I heard Ms. Carr speaking to is that, what is the recourse when something gets out of hand like this? So, and the resident has come, and we've sent staff out to the house? And they didn't come to the conclusion that it was an ejector pump issue? That's, that's not a good situation for us, right? And you have these further complications that have come afterwards? So hopefully, there, well, I'm sure there'll be a discussion with Ms. Reed and the staff here coming up soon. And I'll certainly want to monitor that and see how it, how it turns out. That's it for me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we have a presentation on the brick sidewalk issue, and we have one public input. So we'll go with the presentation first, and then before we get into too much discussion, we'll have public input.
Okay, I'll try to keep it short and sweet. Brad Bennett, Assistant City Engineer. What we're here before you tonight is the Illinois American is doing a water main replacement on Anderson Street between East High and East Green Street. It's on the west side of the street. It's part of the water main installation. They had to remove the existing brick sidewalk. We did have the three property owners on the west side of that block approach us about the possibility of replacing that existing brick sidewalk with a concrete sidewalk. That particular block is in an area of the city that is classified as a major brick sidewalk area, which means per city ordinance, that it would require council approval to change it from a brick sidewalk area into a concrete sidewalk area. So what we're here tonight with the memo is just to present what the property owner's desire is to the city council, and see if the city council is willing to make that motion to change it from brick to concrete. If you do not make a motion, it would remain brick. So with that, I'll, I'll open it up to questions.
Any questions for Brad? Dennis. Okay, so we've had some serious communication here in Ward Five, because this sidewalk is right next to my house. Are the, are the property owners here tonight?
I think, I don't believe any of them are. I was told that one was going to attend, there was another one that had a work conflict, but I do not believe any of them were able or are here this evening.
Okay. So I have asked Charlie to enter into the public record the nine different memos that I received by email, people who are, most of the people in Ward Five, which is, after all, it's called the East Urbana Historic, H-E-U, well, Historic Neighborhood. Well, East Urbana, Historic East Urbana Neighborhood, yes. I don't know why I don't know that, but H-E-U-N-A. And very, one of the very first things that the group did when they formed was lay about half of, about a quarter of a city block of brick sidewalk as a project, which we successfully completed. And we're very proud of our brick sidewalks. And now, you know, people have come up and said, well, brick sidewalks are dangerous. They're, you know, they are uneven, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So they become inconvenient to maintain. They're permeable, they're permeable pavements, so they allow faster runoff of water. But there's also, I mean, a lot of these brick sidewalks are, I don't know, probably 80 years old or something like that, 70 years old. They were installed on layers of ash that were clinkers from, you know, coal fires at that time, which the clinkers are, you know, somewhat compressing and settling. And like any other sidewalk, including slab sidewalks, tree growth and root displacement does affect them. So, I mean, there are, there are slabs of cement sidewalk which are offset two inches and provide just as much of a stumbling danger as the bricks. But it's true, it's hard to maneuver a, a wheelchair on brick sidewalks. And I see, I do see a lot of people walking in the streets, but hey, I do too, because that was, that was so common when I lived out west. Nobody actually had sidewalks, and we all just used to use the streets, and it wasn't a big deal. But we do have brick sidewalks, and I have two long ones in front of my house, one on one side and one on the front. And I try to maintain them, and they're not that hard to maintain, but they do take some effort. Some people have said that they really prefer them. They think they add to the historic quality of the neighborhood, and I totally get that. Well, so when, I've seen some sidewalk sections in East Urbana relayed in the last five years, I would say. You know, most of Oregon Street and California Street have been relayed. And I know for sure that in front of the house at 401 Green Street, which is really the first house on the other side of Urbana Street, on Green Street, in the corner there, it's a corner house. Like about two-thirds of that sidewalk has been relayed. And, you know, it's really even and flat, and it's really a very nice brick sidewalk. So that would be the ideal. If we were going to be able to have some kind of program that eventually would address all the brick sidewalks that we have and relay them over a period of 20 years or something, that would be due diligent maintenance. Okay, but I'm digressing. What I would, what I learned from you this afternoon was that the city of Urbana is not going to have to pay one penny to have this sidewalk reinstalled. Not one penny. Now, usually we say that brick sidewalks are expensive and they cost more, they're more expensive because it takes labor. And it's kind of a skilled labor, and they have to be done right. So I think, in this instance, that the people in my neighborhood would actually like to see the brick sidewalk re-installed as a brick sidewalk, with the assumption that Illinois American Water would be doing a really classy job under the supervision of the city Public Works Department, to do it correctly and to lay a really good sidewalk down the length of the street. And that that sidewalk would be perhaps a model of what a really good reconstructed brick sidewalk can be. So, and if it doesn't cost us a penny, and we can have Illinois American Water do the work, I think that my neighborhood supports retaining the brick sidewalk. I'm very sorry that the various people who live along the, the street disagreed. But I know that none of them, that I've seen the last four or five years, have ever attempted to scrape any weeds off their sidewalk or treat them with Roundup or any kind of weed suppressant. So that's my, I'm going to put this into the public domain as public input. I'd be, I imagine that some people will disagree with me completely. But I think that if we can get a free, really well-laid brick sidewalk at no cost to the city, we ought to go for it. And retain, as one of the individuals said here, the historic quality, historic features of our community are being lost drip by drip by drip through, that was actually Scott Dassett, by unfortunate decisions and inattention. So I'm just saying, I support brick sidewalks. Okay, thanks. We have one public input. Tracy Satterthwaite.
Well, I just found out about this issue just in the last couple of days, and so I haven't had a time to do a tremendous amount of research. But I did do some, and I found that there's been some engineers who've done some studies of the brick versus concrete sidewalks. And they come up with the conclusion that brick sidewalks are cheaper in the long run and do tie a community together aesthetically. They say that it takes about three times as much money to lay a brick sidewalk as it does to lay a concrete sidewalk. Those brick sidewalks will often last 100 years. The concrete sidewalks, if we're lucky, will last 20 years. Now, if we like, take a look in this neighborhood where there's concrete and where there are brick, the concrete sidewalks are in as bad a shape as the brick sidewalks are. Just in walking from my house, which is three blocks away from here, I found that the concrete sidewalks have quite a lot of dangerous places in them. And these are ones that are not that old. The one in front of my house is probably 70 or 80 years old and has never, ever been worked on by the city, ever, that I know of. And I've lived there for 30 years. The only thing that has ever been done by the city for those is that for a couple of years, we had a spraying, there was a schedule for spraying the sidewalks. The city did that for a little while. We were not informed, or at least I wasn't informed, that that was going to stop. And so I didn't know when I needed to take that over again. But I have been, one, I'm also on a corner and have two very long expanses of brick sidewalk, and I love it. And it has not been a serious problem as far as shoveling or people walking on it or any of that kind of thing. The one thing I do notice is, in the wintertime, on the sidewalks that are shoveled, the brick sidewalks dry and get rid of the ice much faster because of the dark color of them. They absorb the sunlight, and they dry and become walkable much more quickly than the concrete ones. That's just an aside. At any rate, I also am one who says, you know, we've, we have established a neighborhood association. It's called the Historic East Urbana Neighborhood Association, established in great part because of a concern about hanging on to some of these, these aesthetics that make our neighborhood nice and, and are reflecting the historic aspects of it. I am one who, who very much feels that that is an important part of our neighborhood. So I am very much for keeping our bricks and hope that that's what, especially when we can get them for free, that we will go ahead and continue to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Eric.
So, am I right that if a concrete sidewalk went in, that it would be up to the city to pay the cost of maintaining it? Is that, is that, is that correct?
Well, whether it's brick or concrete, the city would have to maintain the sidewalk.
Sure, sure, whatever it is.
Yeah.
Now, is it, my impression from just, you know, superficial web browsing is, is actually confirms what was said that brick sidewalks actually last longer or will, will, between, you know, necessary repairs than concrete? Is that, is that true?
I, I, I don't know. I'm not familiar with literature on that. And I, just a clarifying point from Public Works, we're not taking a side on is brick better than concrete? This was just, the property owners requested that we bring this to you to possibly change the material. So, you know, in Public Works, we'll maintain brick or concrete. We, you know, fix them and, and, you know, replace them as we have funds available and, or operations staff time to do that.
So do you have data on how frequently concrete walks need to be repaired?
Well, I mean, there's, there's a lot of, yeah, there's a lot of factors. And I mean, a lot of it depends how it was constructed, how thick it is, you know, what the climate type is here with the freeze thaw. That's, you know, tough on, you know, both the streets and the sidewalks. You know, the number of trees has a huge impact on the life cycle of concrete, whether it's brick or, you know, or a concrete sidewalk. So, I mean, there's a number of factors. I mean, our brick sidewalks obviously have been around for a very long period of time.
Yeah, I guess my, you know, I'm not, I can't call myself an expert or even terribly informed, but my impression from, from some quick research is that, is that the brick will probably go longer without requiring the city to repair than the concrete will. In which case, it would seem to me to be in our interest, public interest, to replace the brick, to ask, you know, to, to require the water company to replace the brick with brick. I don't want to impose an aesthetic, I mean, I like brick, okay? But is brick inherently better than concrete? I don't know. I, you know, I like it, it's aesthetically nice. But, but I think that, it seems to me that we would, you know, just in terms of our public fiduciary responsibility, maybe we'd be better off having them replace brick with brick.
Aaron.
Yeah, I appreciate the, the question about the, the cost and which one lasts the longest and stuff. That was one thing that... There was one thing that you shared, Dennis, and I should say, I also appreciate the, the work of the, those who live in, in the area who want to maintain a particular historic value. And so, the work that would be, that goes into laying the brick sidewalk takes a certain amount of skill. It's not going to be, it's going to require a little more work. Does, is that just simply the responsibility of Ameren or the water company? They just have to find the right people for that?
Yeah, and then they have contractors that can do that work.
Okay, I just want to make sure, because in Dennis's comments, there was a, almost a need to have our people monitoring it. And so I just wanted to make sure that, that, that that cost would not be unnecessarily exorbitant or whatever. It seems like it's probably a normal practice for us, if I remember correctly, that whether it's a street or whatever, we're going to have somebody sort of monitoring. You may not stand there for eight hours, but you're going to be in and out of there. So.
Yeah, we would, we would review the installation of it and approve it, you know, because it is public sidewalk, so, yeah.
All right, thank you.
I just had a question, Brad. Did you say the neighbors came to us and requested the concrete?
Correct.
I saw three letters, but I couldn't tell if they were letters that, I mean, it looks like your, our engineer sent them a letter with a form on the back.
Yeah, we did that to document it. When the sidewalk was removed, they verbally talked to the contractor and our staff that was present out on the job site about doing it. We just did that so you'd have some documentation for the council packets.
But they brought it up first, they said they'd prefer concrete.
Yeah.
Okay. I guess personally, I'd like to hear a little bit more from them or contact them. So this is a motion that would have to be made at City Council, I presume, since this is committee of the whole. So I think we would be, I, I think the best thing to do would be to just forward this to City Council with no recommendation at this time, if somebody wanted to make that motion.
No, I'd like to rather make a motion that we defeat the request for replacement of the existing brick sidewalk with cement on South Anderson Street. Because I don't support it and I don't know if people will support my motion, but I, I assume, I, I would just rather say that, no, we're not, we disagree. And we appreciate the fact that for them, they might feel that brick, that cement slab is easier to maintain or whatever. I don't know that many people who really spend a lot of time maintaining sidewalks in any neighborhood, except for maybe in the winter when they shovel. And then that's maybe 20%. But, I mean, okay, we could make a motion of no recommendation, but I, I think that there could be a motion just to, to defeat the request.
So, it has to go to council either, to full council either way? No, we can defeat it right here? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, with all due respect, listening to the debate and the discussion, I'm not quite sure. The need for all the debate and the discussion, it takes a motion. If no one makes a motion, gets a second to move it on to council with or without a recommendation, it fails, period.
So, does anyone want to make a motion to forward this to City Council? I guess I would just offer that there were three, that all, all three homeowners preferred concrete and those letters suggested sometimes they might want to do that for, to improve travel for elderly or disabled citizens. I don't know if there's elderly or disabled citizens there or people with strollers. I will say that I lived on, I've always had a brick sidewalk in the last two places, long-term places I've lived. The previous place in Champaign, they came through and replaced it with concrete and I was amazed how many kids there were in the neighborhood because suddenly they could ride their big wheels and things on the sidewalks. And they weren't doing that on my brick sidewalk. So, you know, I think there's pluses and minuses, but I respect the wishes of council if nobody wants to make the motion.
No, I'll, I'll, I'll move this to council with no recommendation.
Okay, and since I'm part of the quorum, there's a quorum of four, I guess I can second that.
My reasoning, I think, is similar to Bill's. I, I believe that the, the homeowners themselves, I think we should, I think we should hear them and hear their reasons. I think that's, that's cogent. I don't, I don't like to just blow them off.
Aaron.
So, these are those types of decisions where it is difficult because I think it makes sense to think about people who have wheelchairs or walkers and the convenience of that. And I think that's extremely important. And I, frankly, I, I value that a bit more than just sort of the historic preservation aspect of this. However, I also know that, you know, there are lots of people who have trees in the public right of way or sewer systems in the public right of way, who would love for the city to change that as well, because it would benefit them as a homeowner. So I'm, I'm concerned about, you know, I, I understand the concern. I think we should, it should go to council and we should have the full council to make the, the decision. So I would support it going to council without a recommendation.
Dennis.
Yeah. You know, in our neighborhood, we surrendered rather a lot of brick sidewalk on Green Street, the entire length of Green Street on the north side, so that we could make a accessible pathway from downtown to Victory Park. So that's about six or seven blocks. And, you know, we agreed to remove probably like three blocks of a brick sidewalk to do that. So we're not insensitive to the needs of the public. But I think that we ought to give the opportunity of Illinois American Water to lay a very excellent brick sidewalk, which will benefit all the community in our neighborhood and also sustain our historic interests. And I think that if they do a good job of laying it, as I've seen it laid in other sections of the city, there will not be an issue about people having difficulty with wheelchairs or strollers.
So I'm going to call for the vote.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yeah, I'm opposed.
Okay, so that will go to council with no recommendation and be discussed by all seven of us or whoever can make it next week. Next is Resolution Number 2018-055-021R, Resolution Approving the Champagne Urbana Solid Waste Disposal System Annual Budget, Public Works.
Once again, I'll keep this real quick and short because of the lateness of the hour. This is just the annual budget for the old landfill out where the landscape recycling facility is. The budget's very similar to the previous year, it's kind of the hold the line budget. We do need council approval for it. Champaign also has to approve it. I think most of you are familiar with previous presentations as far as how our joint responsibility works with the U of I and the City of Champaign on it. I guess one item I would point out to you is that the Hoesman Agreement, which is what brought these three entities together to maintain and monitor landfill, actually ends on November 19th of this year, 2018. So we're looking at establishing a new intergovernmental agreement to cover monitoring and maintenance moving forward of the landfill facilities. So with that, I'll open up to any questions.
How much longer does it have to be monitored?
Well, unfortunately for, for landfills, you know, they're always a ticking time bomb. You want to keep track of them and make sure they're not contaminating the environment. I mean, they're, you know, literally something you have to do for perpetuity or until the, the waste is no longer an issue. But I mean, that could be, you know, dozens of years, if not, you know, 100 years away before the waste is done decomposting and no longer poses a threat.
Okay, thanks. Any questions for Brad? Now, is there a motion?
So move.
It's been moved and seconded to forward Resolution Number 2018-05021R to City Council with recommendation for approval. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed that motion carries? Next is Resolution Number 2018-0522R, Resolution Approving Capital Improvement Plan, Public Works.
Okay. What I want to go through is just some of our past recent accomplishments and with our capital improvement program. And this starts out with our Lincoln Avenue. We had a ribbon cutting, opened this road up late last year and this is a major multimillion dollar accomplishment to link up areas that did not have good transportation to and from the north Urbana area. Somewhat of a companion project was resurfacing, millionaire resurfacing about a mile stretch of Lincoln Avenue south of Interstate 74 and linking up almost to where the reconstruction had occurred. Airport Road between Little Road and 45 is now open. There's some punchless items taking place now and restoration work, but this was a great project with TIF money and economic development program money and truck access road program dollars to fund this project. Lyon Street resurfacing, local motor fuel tax took care of this between Main and University Avenue occurred last year. Half a million dollars of LED lighting in the university district around Cranert at Oregon, Gregory and Illinois. Just a side note, we have unfunded to replace the lighting, similar to this lighting on Nevada and Matthews. We had a couple sanitary sewer extension projects, one, Green Street, ahead of the EMCOR Project Five work and accommodate two apartment buildings built in the north side of 800 block of West Green. And also we had a business by 11 acres up on Smith Road. A lot of this area is outside the city, but this portion of a business that needed sanitary sewer was to extend this public sewer. In the background there is the Arbor Division Landscape Recycling Center facility. We've talked about brick sidewalk tonight. By golly, we do repair brick sidewalks. This is a whole list of streets that we do do that. Could we use more funds to repair brick sidewalks so they're all as nice as this? Yes, but we do have constraints. But this is an example of brick sidewalk work that Brad's folks deal with. Fire station, Vince has talked about facility work. Yes, we did do some $12,000 of basic HVAC water heater work at Station Two last year. What do we have coming up for this coming year? Well, EMCOR, again, we are in this stretch run. Craig tells me that the contractor is working very hard and hopes to have all the work done between Lincoln and Wright, actually Bucy and Wright, before the fall semester starts. That would be fantastic because they really have till this fall to complete the work, but they are ahead of schedule and that's, that's working out well. So this has been a very big project in the community and again, to help accommodate all modes of transportation and to be a safe project. Design will hopefully be starting here in the weeks ahead and this is between Bucy and Race to connect to downtown. Real quickly, reconstructing the street, reconstructing the sidewalk, reconstructing the curb and gutter, new driveway approaches, bus stops, six bus stops. Lighting will stay as is, minor tweaking perhaps of that, and then planting trees where appropriate. Again, this is a project that really won't get started until, if not late this year for the most part, 20, excuse me, next summer or 2019, finishing up in 2020. Lincoln Avenue resurfacing, green to university. It's a rough stretch. Lincoln Avenue needs attention, some curb work, ramp work that will be improved, pad, bike crossings, particularly at Main Street, that will be part of this design. And also, part and parcel to this will be addressing portions of Springfield Avenue between Kohler, west of Kohler to Gregory Street, which is about a block west of Lincoln Avenue. Race Street, this would be work next year, but it's in this fiscal year budget between Washington and California to kind of extend the work we stopped downtown to about where the Urbana High School area is. Vine Street is also on the docket to address this portion of roadway in the Washington, California area, state being motor fuel tax money. The work that's going on right now, if you've driven Cunningham, you know it's started because there's lane closures, but this is a good picture of where this 10-foot wide shared use path will go, under 74 up to Napleton Way, connecting down south by Perkins Road, excuse me, Kenyon Road. Our portion of this project is $185,000, which is coming from TIF money. Thank goodness for TIF money because it'd be really hard to fund it with motor fuel tax money. Sanitary sewer extension, the St. Matthew's Lutheran Church has had chronic problems with poor flow. They have a very long lateral from their church, probably a block long to get to the public sewer. Now that the development has occurred in the Meyer area to the west, to the east, we have a public sewer that can be extended to accommodate and shorten their distance and they would reroute their lateral at their expense to the public sewer, which would be routed on the north side of Amber Lane and extended. Facility work, currently we have construction going on for the bathrooms that have been needed to be addressed for many, many years. Maybe this will help with the ISO rating a little bit. I don't know. Hey Jim, shout out for you. Anyway, this is a needed facility. This is where the people live, our firefighters live, and the conditions have not been great, but we're addressing it finally. Also, for health reasons and other reasons, we have, Vince is working on proposals for diesel exhaust system at three of the stations and it's estimated to be around $90,000. Which leads into our facility planning. We have three plans that we'll be talking about, but this is probably the most important. We feel it's been needed for many, many years and it helps us make more informed decisions as to roofs and HVAC and carpeting and all kinds of decisions that we're kind of blindly making. So we'll have a better comprehensive plan and we'll know what facilities stay and what facilities may need to grow, et cetera, et cetera. So we replace this carpeting here, it looks really nice, but maybe the ultimate plan is we blow out that wall and go further east with a new council meeting. Well, maybe we shouldn't have replaced the carpeting, I don't know. That's a hypothetical, but those are some of the constraints and decisions that we're sometimes short with information. Stormwater master plan, Brad has been saying this for some time, but our 1980 master plan is outdated. This is the underpass, if you don't want, I don't know, maybe it's a lake something, but anyway, Lake Vine Street. But anyway, we need to upgrade our master plan, we're excited about it. We have some problem areas we need to address. It's woefully inadequate in addressing, how should we plan for stormwater in the areas around, around our perimeter of the city, is within the mile and a half in particular. And also to get feedback from residents as to, you know, tell us about those chronic areas in town, maybe we can better address them. And lastly, we would like to address more best practices, best management practices for handling stormwater so that we can have a more purified water, if you will, to get rid of the impurities before it goes into our rivers and streams. Pedestrian master plan, talked about this tonight, Bill touched on it, so I won't dwell any more other than it's still ongoing. And our wayfinding plan is nearing completion. We hope to start implementing some signage such as what you see in this slide here in the future ahead. And lastly, I wish we could grow money on trees and if you, I urge you to read the capital improvement plan. There is lots of projects that we've listed that are, just aren't funded. And the list is growing and it kind of is a parallel discussion as to the pension funding tonight. And the fewer dollars you spend now to keep abreast with keeping that pension funded or roads, the more expensive dollars occur in the future when we have to reconstruct roads rather than just mill and resurface them. And I realize it's a major challenge and I realize that it's part of the message that the finance director and the mayor are communicating to us all, but we really need to think of funding sources and such so that we can address the needs in our roads. And believe me, we're not alone in this, what I'm saying to you. But in the same token, as I mentioned in the report, you know, the American Society of Civil Engineers has a grade, a report card in infrastructure throughout the United States and the roadway system in the United States grade is a D. I know we can relate to Ds, excuse me, to grades in this community and Ds is not a grade that we like to have here, but we do need to make investments in our road system. but we do need to make investments in our road system and sidewalks too. We can't, we can't do it all, and we try to be very strategic in what we do. And these folks in front of me here are very good at what they do, but we have to have the tools to do it, and it's the funding. So whether it's facilities, roads, sewers, what have you, stormwater planning, we're here with this plan, and this is what we have. And the recommendation would be to take any questions you may have. And as we do annually, we have a resolution that basically adopts the proposed capital improvement plan, which we update every year.
Thank you. Any questions for Bill? Dennis?
Shall I make a motion?
I had one question.
Okay, go ahead then.
There are a couple of short questions, I think. So I noticed funding went up for EMCOR, I think, from 200 to 455, at least the one line I saw. Do you know, and I know we increased it once before at least, do you know what the current, like, matching percent is? Or how it started out and what it is now? And I just kind of, is it 50%? Are we paying for half of it yet?
It was, you know, I think if I recall, it was about a 43, 44 million dollar project, and about 15.7 was federal funds. So the vast majority was local, local funding.
And that was the way it started out, or that's about?
That's the way it started out.
Do you have any idea what it is now?
No, I don't, but it's obviously increased. There's been some, you know, these large projects, there's a lot of things that develop with time, and that's why we're asking for additional funding there. Some of the work within the project number five there was thought to be perhaps done in-house. There's not staff availability to do that, so we're looking at outside services to help. That's mainly the reason for that cost increase.
Okay. And then on University Avenue, there was a hundred something, 120,000, I think, matching. Do you know what, I didn't think we had to match anything there.
Yeah, well, we asked for the match. So basically, the IDOT was going to replace all the street lighting and traffic signal poles, but being that this is in the university district area, the north end, if you will, plus it's our downtown, if you will, in the north end. We wanted to go with a decorative, black painted, shop painted pole. And believe it or not, to go from a spun aluminum, the grayish looking color, to this black pole for all the street lighting, all the traffic signals, was a upcharge of $150,000. 30,000 of that money is coming from a street lighting line item, that's a commodity line item in the operations budget. So that's kind of John Collins's contribution to help out, if you will. And then the balance is from the capital improvement fund. So it's about $150,000. There should be an IDOT city intergovernmental agreement soon to confirm that number. So that will be coming to council, but that's what it's paying for. We don't, we don't want to go with the black poles, which is counter to what we're doing on campus and counter to what we're doing downtown, but I think it's a little more classier, dressier look that's consistent with what we've done downtown and on campus, but that's the reason for the cost. Because IDOT said, hey, this is a lot of improvements, it's safety related, but this is an aesthetic thing. If you want to pay the extra cost for the colored pole to be black, then we'd have to pay for that cost upcharge.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, clear motion. Oh yeah. So I make a motion that resolution 2018-05-022R approving the capital improvement plan for 2018, go to council with approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Send resolution 2018-05-022R to council with recommendation for approval. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oh, sorry.
Just a question. I didn't know, Bill, did I hear you say that you were recommending an increase in the local motor fuel tax?
I didn't think of that. I didn't say that tonight.
Oh, you didn't? When was the last time it was increased?
It was...
It's in the memo, actually, tonight.
If you give me a second, I'll look it up here. It's been a while, I mean, it's sitting.
While they're doing that, do you remember what the total amount the state's going to spend on University Avenue is?
Oh, millions, multi-millions, yes.
So 120,000 still, pretty small number.
August 2015, August 1st.
And it's at five cents per gallon.
It went from four cents to five cents. One penny generates about $180,000 per year.
You say we got it, the statewide or the country got a D for?
The United States.
United States.
Has a letter graded D for their road conditions.
Usually most students start to step their game up when they get a D and they're willing to do something extra.
I want us to step up.
Like maybe pay more, any of that type of stuff. I was just saying.
Mayor Marlin?
We didn't address this in the proposed budget, but we did mention it last week in our presentation. Over the course of this coming year, we'll be working to develop some funding options to try to start to address the backlog or backlog of infrastructure needs. And it's not something that can be dealt with through the local motor fuel tax. So it's going to have to be a larger scale, but, but we hope to develop some options for you to consider.
Okay, no other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Next is ordinance number 2018-05-037, an ordinance vacating an alley, north alley of Water Street, east of Poplar Street. And I imagine they'll also be talking about the next one, ordinance number 2018-05-038, an ordinance vacating a certain portion of an alley, south of Green Street between Urbana Avenue and Maple Street.
Yeah, I tried to keep both of these short this late hour. The first is for, on Water Street, this is an alley vacation behind a couple of properties that abut the railroad. I guess a couple of things just to point out real quick. There are no utilities back there. We're still going to reserve a utility easement in case we ever need it in the future. And this will have no impact on the Kickapoo Rail the Trail project. All the property owners have signed the petition requesting the alley vacation. You know, it's a non-existent, non-functional alley. It looks just like their backyard. There is no pavement or anything that has to be removed. Would that open up to any questions on the Water Street alley vacation?
Any questions? Doesn't look like it. Do you want to go ahead and explain the other one, or? Okay, let's go ahead and have a motion for the first one.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Aaron, seconded by Eric to send ordinance number 2018-05-037 to city council with recommendation for approval. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
Okay, and then the second right-of-way vacation is a side yard alley vacation between East Green Street, between Urbana and South Maple Street. I think it's between Green and High. And you know, once again, this is a non-functional alley. There is no pavement. If you went out and looked at it, it just looks like people's side yards. This is a little bit different situation than the previous one because we only had three out of the four property owners that we were able to get to sign the petition. One of the property owners was non-responsive. We tried certified mail, we tried phone calls, we tried, you know, visiting the house and trying to catch them to get, but we could not get hold of the property owner. So we are vacating the alley to three out of the four properties. A little sliver of right-of-way will remain for that fourth property. If they, at some point in the future, want us to vacate that little sliver to them, we'll, we'll do that. But the right-of-way is going to be split among the three property owners that did sign the petition. And once again, we'll reserve a utility easement for the existing electrical and phone and cable television overhead wires that run through that area.
Okay, thanks. Any questions for Brad on that one? Now is there a motion?
I move to send council with a recommendation for approval.
Second.
Moved by Eric and seconded by Aaron to send ordinance number 2018-05-038 to city council with recommendation for approval. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. It's 10:30, so we'll need a motion to continue the meeting. We have three more agenda items.
I move to continue the meeting for 15 minutes.
I'll second.
It's been moved by Eric, seconded by Dennis, to continue the meeting for 15 minutes. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Okay, next we have ordinance number 2018-05-039, an ordinance amending Schedule K of Section 23184 of the Urbana Local Traffic Code, prohibiting parking during certain hours on certain streets, Botter Street. Craig?
So on Botter Street, the Traffic Commission recommended the restrictions from 7:00 to 4:00 p.m. Monday through Friday to provide a safe loading area for a student in a wheelchair. This will allow the first student bus service to pull off of the travel lane and into the side of the road to pick up and discharge the student.
Any questions, Aaron?
No, so moved.
I'll second.
It's been moved by Aaron, seconded by Dennis, to send ordinance number 2018-05-039 to city council with recommendation for approval. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Next is ordinance number 2018-05-040, an ordinance amending Schedule Q of Section 2364 of the Urbana Local Traffic Code, decreasing state speed limits on certain streets. Lincoln Avenue between Nevada Street and Pennsylvania Avenue. Craig?
So this section of street, back in 2005, 2006, the city performed a road diet, reducing the number of lanes from four to three through that zone with the hope that it would help with pedestrians crossing the road. We have a fair amount of students and faculty that live on the east side of Lincoln that cross Lincoln to go to the university district on the west side. Since that time period, there have been some concerns about the safety at particularly Lincoln in Iowa and Lincoln in Ohio with regard to pedestrians crossing that stretch of road. There's about 16,000 vehicles a day that go up and down Lincoln. In response to those concerns, staff performed a traffic study. We, we looked at the crashes that occurred at Lincoln in Iowa and Ohio and Indiana and Michigan. And what we found was, there was a fair amount of concern there with some incapacitated crashes occurring at Iowa and Ohio, not so many at Indiana or Michigan, but definitely the other two locations. As a result of that, we did further analysis, and we used a guide called the Champagne-Urbana Crosswalk Guidelines, which is a newly developed guide by COATs, our Metropolitan Planning Organization. And within there, it basically recommended that some enhancements need to be performed at Lincoln in Iowa and Ohio and Indiana, which would mainly be bump outs to make the pedestrians more visible, a median island in the middle for safe harbor and enhanced pedestrian signage. The, those improvements are not currently budgeted within the capital improvement budget, but we did feel that there is a chance to obtain a Highway Safety Improvement Program grant through the Illinois Department of Transportation. So we intend to apply for that grant. It's a 90-10 grant, meaning 90% federal funding and 10% local funding. And we would apply for that basically next spring with the hopes that we could receive that grant, which would allow us to improve these locations. In the interim, we felt that it would be best to lower the speed limit from 30 to 25 mile an hour, primarily for several reasons. The chief reason being is it is on the border of the university district. The speed limit within the university district is 25 mile an hour. And largely due to the number of pedestrians. There's a lot of pedestrians that are crossing that street. We felt that lowering the speed limit would basic, would give pedestrians a better chance should an accident occur. In other communities, they've cited basically saying that a person is about 70% more likely to be killed if they're struck by a vehicle traveling at 30 mile an hour versus 25 mile an hour. Reducing vehicle speeds from 30 to 25 doubles the likelihood of pedestrians surviving a crash. I will point out that the crashes that we did see are not directly related to speeding, but we did feel within this corridor with the large amount of students that it would be a recommended action. So we took this to Traffic Commission. Traffic Commission voted to forward this on to the committee of the whole. And that's our recommendation.
Thanks, Craig. I did go to that Traffic Commission meeting, and there was also, there were some people from sororities and the university there, and they did talk about doing some kind of education and outreach to the students when they get on campus because some of them came pretty unaware of the laws, for one thing, and the, and the kind of culture that exists, and being a little bit more careful about stepping out in front of traffic.
That's correct. There, you know, with, with any crash, there's multiple reasons. Some of the concerns that, and through our observations, is basically, there's a lot of distracted walking. There's also a lot of distracted driving. So it was felt that with lower vehicle speeds, this would probably be the way to go.
Any questions, Aaron?
So one of the things that I think is really important is the survival rate from 30 to 25, because we do see these things, these accidents taking place. I think that's something that's, we have to consider. I'm not sure that lowering the miles per hour changes how fast people actually go down through that stretch. I think people are, I travel that stretch quite a bit, and I know that personally, and I think I see other people pay more attention to the crosswalks for, that the students now have the right of way basically to walk out in front of you and you need to stop when that happens. I think that, I don't know if speed bumps are absolutely out of the question for a short stretch like that. I think something, a deterrent like that is probably going to have more of an impact on how fast people drive down that stretch than changing the speed limit. I think people are going to drive that stretch the way that they've always, they don't, I don't even know if people even pay attention to the speed limit signs during that stretch. So I do see a lot of traffic. I do see, I mean, some pedestrians are like very cautious, others have their heads in their phones, and they're just walking, not in the walkway. So they're, the new state law, whatever, that said that we have to stop when the pedestrians are in that, in that walkway. I think that there's a culture that's been created by that, that the students feel like they don't have to even pay attention to the, the traffic. They just think that you're going to stop automatically. So anything to help reduce the tragedy or any sort of accidents, I think is helpful. I just don't, I'm not convinced that changing the speed limit is going to change that though.
Certainly, posting a speed limit doesn't necessarily mean that people will, motorists will abide by them. We do anticipate putting up warning signs on the other, either end of the corridor that would maybe have flashing light or a flashing LED border that would say high pedestrian area. One of the things that we could look at too is pedestrian, I mean, vehicle speed feedback signs perhaps. That, those have high compliance where, you know, you're giving that indication, hey, you're driving too fast, this is your recorded speed. But we'd have to investigate that budget wise if we could do that. I think what we're trying to do here is just give the pedestrian a chance. Certainly enforcement, you know, could be a component of the, of any kind of speeding through there. But we're just trying to give the pedestrian a chance, I think.
Well, thanks for looking into this. Yeah, it's a very high pedestrian crossing area. And it is also a kind of major north-south arterial
arterial street for people to come and go down to Florida Avenue and, you know, from downtown. So I'm kind of feeling like, I'm not interested so much in the reduction of the, of the speed. Let me ask you, is speed reduced to 25 miles per hour when, on Springfield Avenue near the Engineering Library?
Yes.
In that classwork, okay.
Yeah, city council passed that in 2016, and we also reduced Green Street through the heart of, heart of the university district at the same time.
Okay, so, okay, I was just trying to remember how that worked. I really like the idea of bumpouts, which make the journey for the individual pedestrian shorter across the street, and it seems like there is room in the street layout to adjust for those kinds of features. And I like the idea of the warning sign, or some kind of sign says, you know, entering high pedestrian corridor, so people will look. Don't know, but I haven't decided yet how I feel about reducing the speed limit. I guess that's where I'm at.
Eric?
So I drive across Springfield Avenue and, or cross campus frequently, also up and down Lincoln Avenue, but I think that the change in what's happening on Springfield Avenue is so much for the better. Now, whether, to what extent the speed limit was part of that, or whether that was all accomplished by the flashing lights and the, just, I don't know, there was, but, yes, I think, I think the speed limit, people may, you know, people aren't going to be looking at their speedometer, they're going to be looking, what I'm driving through there, I'm looking out for pedestrians, not looking, not looking at my speedometer. On the other hand, I think that when the speed limit is lower, people tend to drive more slowly, even if they're not consciously at the speed limit. So I would support this package. I think it'll make the area safer, as the corresponding improvements have made Springfield safer, and the difference for that short stretch between driving at 30 and driving at 25 isn't even really worth mentioning in how rapidly you get where you're going, so, so I will support this.
Anything else? Does anyone have, would like to make a motion?
I'll move to send this to council with a recommendation for approval.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved by Eric, seconded by Aaron, to send resolution number 2018-05-040 to city council with recommendation for approval. Any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you, Craig.
Thank you.
Last is ordinance number 2018-05-041, an ordinance approving an assignment of a power purchase agreement from WCP Solar Services LLC to WCP Financials LLC. Scott Tess?
A very brief summary. This ordinance is in regards to the small solar array that powers the Arbor Division shop located at the landfill. The ordinance would allow the city, would authorize the city to consent to an assignment of the agreement, to the power purchase agreement, through which we buy the power from the solar array. This is a common transaction in the solar industry, the developer installs and develops a power purchase agreement, and then assigns it to another business that has tax liability so they can use the tax incentives. While that is a very common transaction in the solar industry, it is fairly uncommon that the customer, in this case, the city, retains the right to consent to that assignment. I mention that so that we're aware in future power purchase agreements, we are unlikely to have, be able to preserve the ability to consent to this assignment. I'll take any questions you have.
Questions for Scott? Eric?
But there's no reason not to consent to the assignment, that you could say. No. Okay.
Is there a motion?
I move, we consent to the assignment.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, it forwards ordinance number 2018-05-041 to city council with a recommendation for approval. Any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. Thank you all very much. Saying no further business, this meeting is adjourned.